This is a regular session of the School Board of School Board Trustees. School City of Chicago, the time is now 6:05. The place is Administration Building, 1401 East 144th Street, East Chicago, Indiana, 46312. This is also being shown via livestream at www.scec.k12.in.us. This meeting is of the purpose of the School Board in public for the purpose of conducting the school corporation's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Smith.
Present.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Present.
Trustee Taylor.
Present.
Madam President Gibson King.
Present.
Trustee Gomez.
Present.
Now, can we please rise for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have our mission statement by Dr. Bonet.
Good evening. The School City of East Chicago is committed to developing a community of lifelong learners who are empowered to access, process, evaluate, and ethically apply information to ever-changing global society.
Thank you. 2.01, approval of the agenda. Are there any comments from the audience, please? Can I get a motion to approve 2.01, the agenda?
Madam President, make a motion to approve item 2.01.
Motion made by Trustee Rodriguez.
Second.
Second by Trustee Smith. Are there any comments from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King.
Yes.
Now, we have our administrative report. Superintendent Dr. Bonet.
Good evening once again, School City of Chicago, Community and School Board of Trustees. Here's my report for May 29, 2025. Lincoln School celebrates outstanding achievement once again. We are thrilled to announce that McCaden Ashford has officially completed his seventh grade Alex Pie. He now joins fellow sixth grader Janaya Drones in reaching this incredible milestone. Let's give him a hand. We want to acknowledge the hard work and expert leadership and instruction under Ms. Nia Drake's and all her amazing sixth grade math class. We cannot wait to see what McCaden and Janaya will accomplish next year as they continue their academic journey at Block Junior High School. This year, 29 students earned their 911 certification in partnership with our CTE and Special Education Department. Let's give them a hand. For athletics, our unified track completed their season at the sectional tournament hosted by Val Perezzo High School this past weekend. The nine Cardinal athletes placed in their respective events. In baseball, we are hosting the 3A Boys Sectional Baseball Tournament this week, May 28 through June 2, at Block Stadium. The Cardinals will be in action Friday, May 30 at 7:00 PM and will be playing the winner of the Highland versus Gary Westside game. In girls tennis, the doubles team competed in IHSAA Singles and Doubles Sectional Bracket Wednesday, May 28 at Culver Academies in Indiana. Our golf, softball, and track and field seasons have completed. The top three finishers for track and field advanced to sectionals on regionals this past Tuesday, May 27, and today, the boys, May 29. Congratulations to all of our athletes for awesome spring season. And then finally, our EC Hoops Elite AAU 10U coached by graduating senior Isaiah Jukes were the Memorial Day Classic Champions. This is another step in our efforts to build and improve our feeder system and develop our student athletes, starting at the elementary level. Let's give them a hand. Our last recognition is for our parent volunteers. We want to recognize three outstanding parent volunteers who have volunteered over 100 hours for the 2024-2025 school year. They have all volunteered in our school system for more than 10 years. From Harrison School, Elida Aponte. We're going to ask them to come forward. Is Mr. Aponte here? Yes. Also, from Harrison School, Ulyteria Munoz. And from McKinley, Brenda Bahina. Ms. Aponte has volunteered 122.4 hours. Ms. Munoz has volunteered 122 hours. And Ms. Bahina has volunteered 110 hours.
And then stay up front because we're going to take a picture. And if the board can stand so we can have a picture. Thank you. Our Executive Director of Business Operations, Mrs. Simmons.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. I want to give an update on the projects that is concurrent over the summer. We have one approval for a bid to be approved tonight, moving forward with all of the remodeling of the bathrooms at Central High School, including new partitions, new plumbing, new sinks, new hardware, and new floor. So it's going to look very nice. So that one will start on Tuesday. We also is looking for our last bid on the striping and the painting of the tennis court. We have the three bids for the asphalt for the fence, and now we need the striping. That will be concluded and will be on the next board agenda for approval. We also started the freezer and cooler removal at Central High School. So that will be completed within two weeks. So we're moving right along. Also, we did get the permits for the remodeling of, not so much remodeling, the adding of the elevator to the south side, I'm sorry, west side of Central High School. Also, we have the permits also for redoing the stairs in the back of Central High School, the concrete stairs. So we're moving forward with all of our projects at this right on time. Any questions?
Thank you. We're going to go off track, Ms. Jewel Harris, for a minute, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to share some positive news with the board and the audience tonight. And this is regarding one of our scholars, a graduate of East Chicago Central High School. She's here tonight with us. Her name is Orelli Aguilar Prieto. If you could please stand up. Orelli is a 2023 graduate from EC Central. She is currently a summer intern at my office, Harris Law Firm. And I wanted the public to know that people are paying attention to our kids working hard and doing great things. She is currently a student at the University of Notre Dame. She is a Lilly Endowment Scholar. She participated in the Notre Dame/Washington program in Washington, DC for a semester-long program. And she is a major in political science and scheduled to graduate in May of 2027. She's been working this summer so far on a variety of projects that are very important to my office, some of which involve certifications for our office. But she's even done, worked on projects involving acquisition of an island, which is a unique project. And I'm very proud of her and I'm glad that we were able to pick someone from within the school district to really contribute to the legal profession. So if you want to say a couple words?
Yeah, of course. Thank you Attorney Harris for that amazing introduction. It has been great working with you, getting professional experience working at a law firm. I'd like to note that it's been great to see how involved one can be in the community as a legal representative. I've seen that through Attorney Harris' work. I also like to mention that for this past year, I've been working to create free English classes in the city of South Bend. And I started that this fall semester, and it's continuing through the summer. I have some of my peers that have continued in the program. And I'm looking to make this program a permanent program embedded into a nonprofit organization that provides social services, legal service, legal and mental health services to immigrants in the community. And I like to do that here in the area of East Chicago and the area of Lake County and Cook County, given that there's a large immigrant population in this area. That being said, I'm also doing free English classes this summer. They're Mondays and Fridays from 5:00 to 6:30. If you guys yourselves or know anybody that might be interested in these English classes, please let them know. I will be completing, for now, my internship at Harris Law Firm, which is today, and I'll be going tomorrow to start my internship. And Chicago will be conducting research at congregations and how they are involved with social justice. And then completing my two-month term there, I will return back to the Harris Law Firm.
So mark my words, this young lady is going to be a rock star, and I just want you to know that, okay?
We're going to get a MOU with your law firm, so we're going to send you to.
And thank you, Madam President. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're going to go to item four, the consent agenda. Are there any public comments from the audience? Can I get a motion, please?
Madam President, I make a motion for approved consent agenda.
Motion made by Trustee Smith.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Trustee Rodriguez. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King.
Yes.
Now, we're going to go into new business. 5.01, approval of the personnel report. Are there any questions from the audience? Helen Steinbach.
Thank you. Helen Steinbach, 5207 East 73rd Avenue, Maryville, Indiana. I have a couple comments about the personnel report. Item number six and number seven, with the involuntary transfers of our social workers from Block to Lincoln and from Lincoln to Block. My understanding is that the social worker at Lincoln is retiring, and so that will leave Block with no social worker, when previously they had two social workers, and the one that's being transferred to Lincoln has been doing that job by herself for a long little while. So I would be very concerned about that. My second item is item number nine, 10, and 11. There's teachers listed as being non-renewed, and I'm concerned that the procedure that's supposed to be followed in the state of Indiana has not been followed. So I would ask the Board of Trustees to amend the personnel report and remove items nine, 10, and 11 for further investigation, so that we don't have problems down the line and other extra meetings and things like that. And then on item number 27 and 28, a stipend being given to two people regarding college and career readiness. And our counselors are part of that job too, and how come there's no stipend for them?
Thank you, Helen. Any comments from the board? I saw you had a comment about what Mrs. Helen Steinbach questioned about the two employees that get the stipends. I think I asked that question earlier. You didn't get a chance to get that for us, Dr. Bonet.
does have an allocation of $10,000, which is supposed to be paid as a stipend to administrators who oversee the grant. Um, so therefore, obviously, unless a counselor was serving as administrator role, they wouldn't be eligible. So we do have two administrators serving that role, and that is why they're eligible for that stipend.
But what happened to the teachers, like Mrs., like Mrs. Helen said here?
The career coaching grant is $15,000. $10,000 is for the administrative stipend. $5,000 is earmarked for field trips.
Okay, I, I think that I would like to table these two items here if, if I can, so we get some clarification. Okay. So just kind of get a motion to table. On the personnel report, item 27 and item 20, 28. Item 27? 28, yes.
Madam President.
Yes, uh, Trustee Rodriguez.
I'd like to add maybe three more as well.
Go ahead.
Um, in terms of, in terms of what, um, the union president mentioned with regards to item nine, 10, and 11.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Dr. Burney, can you give us sort of an, uh, I know this is personnel matters, so can you just give us a quick overview of what transpired, of why these individuals are non-renewed?
Yes, those teachers are emergency permits, and their emergency permit expires June 30th.
Okay. And in other words, they can be called back if, if they're needed again.
If their permit is renewed.
Now, is there any shortage of teachers in the district as of right now?
Yes, if, um, we recall, we still have approximately 80 positions, um, that are filled by emergency teachers. Those teachers who have adequately renewed their license were not placed in that non-renewal category.
Thank you.
Was that it, Rodriguez? Uh, you want to table that one too?
Uh, no, actually, I think you explained that. So, so I'll make a motion to table 27 and 28.
Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Trustee, uh, Taylor. Madam Secretary, oh, can I get a vote, please?
Madam President.
Yes.
Madam President.
Yes, uh, Trustee.
Um, I, I would, I, I would like to add on to that, um, items nine, 10, and 11. Um, I'm still not satisfied with the response. It sounds to me that if it's an emergency permit issued, those can easily be, um, renewed. And we allow deans to enroll in school even though they haven't completed their school. So if we're allowing for deans to function without a full license, it would seem to me to make sense, we would do the same thing, especially given the shortage of teachers like we have currently. If by chance, um, we, we don't need them, then I think that's a different story. But it sounds to me that for need of teachers.
Trust, Trustee Gomez? Trustee Gomez?
I can hear you.
Can you hear me? Um, you mentioned that nine, 10, 11 are deans, or are they teachers?
They're teachers.
They're teachers.
They're teachers.
Okay. Madam President?
Yes, Trustee Rodriguez.
Uh, Dr. Burney, so what happens if these three individuals are not re, non, are non-renewed on 6:30, 2025?
Quite, if I understand the question, what happens if they're not non-renewed?
Yeah.
So they, the state of Indiana hasn't said that they have a valid license to teach as of June 30th.
So, so that allows the superintendent, like yourself, to bring in an individual who's?
We'd have to fill those positions with teachers who have a valid emergency permit or a, a valid teacher license.
Okay. So in the new school year, would you give, say, for example, the ones, these three that you have non-renewed, would you give them first, you know, uh, for next school year if, if they're needed again?
So if they.
How does that work?
Their, their license becomes valid, um, and then they would be able to reapply. But I'll have Dr. McJunkins add on to that statement as well.
So these three individuals were non-renewed based on the recommendation of the building principals. They do all have emergency permits. All emergency permits expire June 30th of any teacher that has an EP. They will be allowed, just like any of the other EPs, we have not guaranteed any EPs, uh, a return. We do, there are some that the principals are very satisfied with. However, the, our main goal is to try to get licensed teachers with valid professional educator, Indiana licenses in those classrooms. And then, of course, if we have EPs that apply and want to return, we will begin to fill those slots with EP teachers. But the main goal is to try to get licensed teachers. These particular ones were recommended by the principals not to renew. I know, in fact, one was offered a position and declined. Okay?
Yeah, you can speak, Helen.
My concern is that the procedure wasn't followed correctly. I, I haven't received a reassurance from Dr. McJunkins or the building principals that these three teachers were given a letter stating, you're not being asked to come back, and what, what the reason is. In the state of Indiana, they're supposed to be given a letter in something in writing saying, we're not renewing you because of this. And if it's because your EP expires or because you're, you can't do your position, you need to tell them in writing. And I'm not, I'm not, have not been reassured that that's happened. And so I will ask the superintendent then for a meeting for these teachers later on if, if they're not removed from the personnel report.
Madam President, can I ask a quick question?
Yes, yes.
I just have a, Helen, this is a question for you, just so procedurally, I understand the argument. Do you believe that that letter should come after the board takes action or before the board takes action?
Before the board takes action, so that they can resign instead of being non-renewed.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure we're clear of what it is you're arguing.
Because we did send the letters to them.
The letter did to them. You say you did send them a letter?
Yes, the letters went out from the, uh, Department of Human Resources. But she's saying that we should have, or she prefers that we notify them so that they can resign versus being non-renewed.
Right, right. Okay. Do you happen to have copies of those letters?
Uh, yes, when Mr. Guardiola returns. He's been out sick, but yes, we have copies of them.
Okay, um, so I need to ta, add this into the table with the other three items that I.
Madam President, that doesn't have a motion yet.
Oh, okay, so I, I didn't need to do another motion to table, to table these.
Well, there's a motion in a second.
I got to close out this one, this other motion for the, for the two that I already did. So, uh, so we did vote to table these two items, right?
Yeah.
We haven't voted, we just.
Okay, can I get a vote, then? Can I get a motion for, to table, uh, items 27 and 28, please?
Just item 27, 28.
Madam President.
Yes, Trustee Gomez.
Yeah, it, it just, it, I'm, I'm lost now. I, I thought we were adding nine, 10, and 11.
We are, we're going to make a bid, a separate. A, a separate motion. We're going to do that. Don't get me confused now.
Separate motions, all right.
Can I get a roll call, please? Yes.
Trustee Gomez.
No.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King.
Yes. Now we'll go into our second motion on the personnel report for nine, 10, and 11, to table these three items as well. So can I get a motion to table nine, 10, and 11 on the personnel report?
Madam President, I make a motion to table nine, 10, and 11. Motion made by Trustee Smith.
Second it.
Seconded by Trustee Taylor. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez.
Madam President.
Yes.
Uh, Madam President, I just wanted to make a comment at this point. I, I'm, I'm unclear what we're doing with, we've been talking about teacher shortage in exec sessions for a while. I don't think it's a secret. Uh, the teachers are leaving the field, um, across the board. My question is, now that we've just invested in people to become deans, and it's not quite directly related to this, but it is somewhat related to what are we doing to get, to help people on EPs getting their license? I just want to make that statement before we take the vote.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Gomez. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Trustee Gomez.
No.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
And this is to, and this is to table the, the three items?
Yes, uh, Trustee Rodriguez.
Uh, no.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King.
Yes. And then we'll have, um, five point zero two, approval of the applied skills summer inter, internship.
Madam President.
Yes. Trustee Rodriguez.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the personnel report five point zero one as amended.
Okay, all right. And, uh, approved by Trustee Rodriguez. Seconded by Trustee Smith. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Trustee.
You, you want to speak, Trustee Gomez?
Yes, I, I just want to make a comment that the reason I'm voting no.
Yes.
Is the same reason I voted no on past personnel reports. I think in the spirit of transparency, um, the personnel report, as I look at it, the public has no idea who we're voting on. And it makes it difficult, I think, for them to make comments when they don't know individuals that we're looking at. I don't understand why the secrecy. Every school district around us publishes their personnel report for the public to see and comment on. I don't understand why we're doing this. Um, it, it's very upsetting to me. Um, that's why I'm voting no on these.
Okay. Well, we'll discuss that, uh, further amongst ourselves, um, but I think you kind of know why.
I would appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Trustee, Trustee Gomez.
No, I'm sorry, we already did a roll call. I'm going to go to item, um.
Madam President.
Okay, I'm sorry. For the amended, okay. Roll call, uh, Madam Secretary.
Trustee Gomez.
No.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King.
Yes. Now we'll go to five point zero two, approval and applied summer skills for internship. Guess that's you, Tammy Poe.
Good evening, uh, School Board of Trustees and, uh, School City community. I am asking the board to approve an internship that I would like to start, where we have seniors and juniors, uh, work for so many hours and get a stipend, um, uh, teaching them the skills. For example, this one is bus, uh, they love working at the bus barn. They're learning, um, about, you know, cleaning and doing our soft skills and different skills. And we're hoping to get them out into the community, looking for jobs elsewhere. But also, we're hoping to expand this program to, um, be all year round. And this will be a little money for the seniors in their pocket, showing them responsibility. They have to apply for these jobs. There's a job, um, description. It's just, it's just like any other job. It's actually getting ready for the real world.
Oh, okay.
Any questions?
Are there any questions from the audience?
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry, it is for my program. Yeah, this is out in the community. No, we are working to get them out there, and we're using our facilities first. Um, we have, we have about 10 businesses. We're opening others. And, um, as we speak, we're finding what the kids need, what they like. We're trying to really address our students so they're not going to be at home after they graduate. And so, um, with the support of the superintendent and the school board, we're hoping to, um, open and, and announce two big businesses coming up. But, yeah, that will bring in. Yep, yeah, and we are looking for partners, so yes, out in the community. Yes, absolutely. Mm-hmm.
Yes, um, are, are there any more questions from the audience? Can I get a motion from the, um, from, can I get a motion? Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve, thank you, approved by Trustee Smith.
Uh, I'll second the motion on approval of five point zero two.
Approved by, approved by Trustee Rodriguez. Now, are there any questions from the board?
Yes. It won't take long.
Okay.
Come on, get some, Tammy, show them. These are the T-shirts that have been made by special ed students. Um, you may have a chance to look at them. They are handmade through our print shop. We do sell them to fund all of our other programs. And I'm so proud of them, and they do T-shirts, they do, uh, sweatshirts, and these are by special needs. And this one, it says, "Love Needs No Words."
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So if everybody would support them, it would be more than appreciative because they work so hard, because they're doing things that other students have not even thought about doing. Thanks to, uh, Mr. Graylin, he says one of them have to, he has to do another kind of bird or something, Tammy, but he'll get with you, the cardinal or something. I don't know what's right.
He and I go back and forth.
These are made by special needs, so if you want to purchase them, please sit, be see Ms. Tammy Poe.
Thank you.
This is the one that I let it direct. I guess the bird's not mad or something. I don't know, but he said it has to be redone. Yes, it is. So I would just like for you all to please support them. Um, they're going to start doing jackets, and they're doing very good. They're very, very, very productive. Um, and the sweatshirts are very, very nice, and we're going to try to learn, get them to do the pants to match, so let's give them a round of applause. So let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you very much. It's the kids.
Thank you, Trustee Smith.
We have an amazing team, and I will say that, that, I, thank you for that. I know my team will appreciate it. The teachers, the paras, the students, everyone, they're just, it's, I'm always in awe. I, I just cannot believe all the wonderful things they're doing, and I'm just so proud of everybody, so thank you for that.
And thank you. Are there any more comments from the Board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Rusty Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King.
Yes. We go to five point zero three, approval memorandum of understanding with Purdue University Northwest, empowering the next generation in clean energy and smart grid. Are there any questions from the audience?
It sounds like an awesome program when you guys were in work session the other day, and I listened to it. I think it's very impressive. I'm just concerned about the teacher working outside of their contract and making sure that they'll be covered for anything that might happen. Even though I know we're not paying anything, that PNW is paying everything. I just want to make sure that he is still, or she, I don't even know who it is, it's still covered if something were to happen.
Did you mean covered from a liability perspective, or?
All of those things.
Or is there something else that you had a concern? I just want to make sure we're addressing whatever the concerns are. Yes, they would be covered, to answer the question, yes, they would be covered from a liability perspective. But if there's something else, I don't know what you might be referring to, so. Yes, yes, they'd be covered, yes.
Can I get a motion to approve five point zero three?
Madam Secretary, I make a motion to approve five point zero three.
Approved by Trustee Rodriguez.
Second.
Second by Trustee Smith. Are there any questions from the Board?
Madam President, I do apologize. I said Madam Secretary. So I do apologize for that, Madam President.
I know you're talking to me, Trustee Rodriguez. Okay. Okay. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King.
Yes. Five point zero four, approval memorandum of understanding for Think Big Entertainment and Drumline Enrichment Program. Are there any comments from the audience, please?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
I'll do this.
May I approach and pass out his literature?
Sure, yes, you have some literature, yes, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mr. Murphy, Director of Vance for School City of Chicago. And we're trying to get this set up because, one minute, okay. Oh, it's not, oh, okay. Okay, we can do it. Okay, well, I had, I had a visual, so everyone in the audience could see this. But just to address this, I proudly wear, I'm a graduate of Lang College in Jackson, Tennessee, and I also attended Lincoln University of Missouri in Jefferson City, Missouri. And I also attended Roosevelt High School in Gare, Indiana, which is only one of three historically black high schools in the state of Indiana. So I know my culture, and I understand it because I live it. At Lincoln University of Missouri, I was the head drum major for three marching seasons. I ran every rehearsal. I did the summer band camp. I also did recruitment as well. So I think I might know a little bit about this. As an undergrad, as an instrumental music education major, you have to take, you have to take piano proficiency. That's piano one through four, music, music, no, there is no music appreciation because that's not considered a heavy course for a music ed major. However, percussion studies was one of the, one of the courses that we had to take. You had to take one through four, and they also take a proficiency at the end of that as well. So I, I know what to do. Board, this, the, the first thing that you have is the, the proposal that was, that was submitted on 10/15/2023 for a individual that I was, that was, I was recommending as he is, he knows very well the culture of the show style marching, which is what someone was referring to as, you know, the HBCU style. No, it's not that, the correct terminology, if you're going to quote it, make sure you do it correctly, is show style marching. Because we have show style marching, we also have glide step, which is what you see with your drum chords and things of that, of that nature. So this is, this is the first one that you have here, and he did apply, and he's done it a total of three times and has not, has yet to hear back from anything. Now, with some of the false, uninformed, and just downright lies that were spoken of by someone from last week, let me put this into perspective, because again, on this, on this packet board, you also have the itemized breakdown of the, of the events, list of events, in the order in which they occurred. The last week of February, the initial proposal for the summer band program was submitted as a hard copy to my immediate supervisor. She was later, she later instructed me to give that to her, submit it to her in electronic form, which I did. That was on March 10th. The electric version of the proposal was submitted to that individual. And we also have the timestamps as well, so you can go through and see that with all of the emails, which was the only correspondence that this person and I have ever had in regards to anything. Did not receive a response until April 4th. So you can kind of do, I'm not a math major, but it's just quite a bit much time between March 10th and April 4th. Moving on, received, I received a response from this person, and she asked if this group of students will be participating in the Mexican Heritage Day Parade, which you can also read here as well. I responded on April 6th, and that's also listed as well, so you can, you can read it. No response was, was received back from said individual following my submission on April 6th. Fast forward to April 24th, let's make sure we do our, do our math here. Sent a second follow-up email to this individual due to lack of response. Time is ticking at this point. I'm getting calls, I'm getting visits, in-person visits from parents and guardians asking about, are we going to have our summer band, which we've had consecutively for the past seven years I've been with the district, with the exception of the two years that we didn't have for COVID, for obvious reasons. May 2nd, I sent a third follow-up email to this individual. Finally received a response after this third attempt where I was informed that we would not be offering band. We would be offering dance, flaccorico, mariachi, drum line, things of that nature, which is, which is all in here. Yes, hello, we will not be offering band this summer. We will only be offering mariachi, ballet, flaccorico, drum line, and dance. So I just wanted to point this thing, these things out that the, the statements that were made on last week were uninformed and just downright lies. If someone was not, was not planning to be here this summer and work with their students, then nothing would have been submitted back at the beginning of March. I'm sorry, at the end of February, let me make that clear, at the end of February, because it was submitted electronically in March. So that is a total, that's just, that's just a lot. We're just going to call it what it is. And when I did my research, because you have, as, as an education major, music instrumental, that is considered a double major. So we have to make sure that we're on top of things, magna cum laude graduate speaking here. So I looked up and never once did I see anything that said anything about education, because that's what the main goal should be. And I always refer to it and call it as such, instrumental music education, because we're educating our students. This, every year that we've had, that I've been with the district, seven years with the exception of the two years that we had for COVID, each one of my students that have wanted to go to college and have a scholarship in that have received such. This year is one of, is the largest that I've had since I've been here with the district. And this young man is receiving $12,000 plus for his first year without an audition. None of my students have to audition. Lastly, when I got here, there was no band curriculum, there was no instrumental music education curriculum. I'm the only, and let me, let this, let me be clear with this. I am the, there is no performing arts. I am performing arts. And so what I'm trying to do is bring the arts programs back to the School City of Chicago, because we have very talented students. So we didn't have, there was no, no anything to go, so I had to develop a curriculum, which you all have a copy of as well. And, and this aligns directly with the IDOE as, as it is listed online as well for me to follow to the T for our music education instrumental students. And of course, we have to make some, some slight variations as it, as it pertains to our students. Some students have, have different needs, and we need to address those. So we have to use some type of differentiation in order to get that for our students. But no child is left behind, not on my watch. And for someone to go out and insult me, insult my intelligence as such, when I can't recall if you ever had gone to a HBCU. And when I speak afterwards, I will show you that, I don't just talk the talk, I walk the walk. So if a student wants to learn how to, how to march at 90, I can get out there with them. I can do it. If a student wants to learn how to do a backbend, I've done it. Might not be able to do it now, because I've gotten a little older, but I can do it. Every instrument that you see my students playing, I have taught them. And each student that performs with our program is proficient on their level. Now, no, we don't have a drum line because I don't teach drummers. I teach percussionists. So you are correct with that one small little inkling of ignorant statement that you made. But if you're going to say something, make sure you do it right. We have percussionists, because when I call these band directors, they don't want drummers. A drummer come a dime a dozen, but a percussionist does not. So my students know what they're doing, how to do it, and when and where to come in with them, if they are supposed to come in or not supposed to come in. And to date, we only have three percussionists that can do what they're supposed to do, and I don't have to tell them anything. And all three of them are our special needs students. All three of them are, they are autistic. And I don't have to tell them to do anything, because they understand and know what to do. Now, if you want to come for me, please make sure that you check yourself before you wreck yourself. I think Ice Cube said that. In saying that, thank you so much, and I'm looking forward to working with everyone in the fall, because we're going to have a great program. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
To follow up what Mr. Murphy said, I asked him to come speak with you today because I was concerned about some of the information that was given at the work session, and I felt that it was not truths. And so that's why I wanted him to speak in person to you guys, because I know the band is important to all of you. You guys have all spoken about it. And if we were to have a summer program, I would think that our teachers that are employed already would be given an opportunity to bid for that job if you're offering that job. Nothing against the gentleman that's running the program that's on for approval. I think that that, his program sounds wonderful as well, but we need to open it up to our teachers first before we open it up to somebody in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more, any questions from the Board?
Yes. Madam President.
Oh, you got something to say, Mr.?
Oh, I'm sorry. Anybody from the audience anymore? No, I'd just like to say that I can remember in 2023 when that program was denied. I don't know why. I do know why, but I'm just not going to divulge that information, but it was a bunch of lies. But Mr. Murphy did come back and tried to reconstruct that particular program, because we didn't have music, we didn't have choir, we didn't have anything, we didn't even have any instruments. And whether you know it or not, we don't know what happened to our instruments, so he had to scramble and get instruments. So we had to rent them. There was no way East Chicago should have had to rent instruments after we had everything we needed. The only thing we should have been able to place back was some strings for violins or a reed for a cello. So I think he's doing a wonderful job right now, and he has a curriculum. So I'm really proud of you, and I'm glad that you stepped up, because there was a lot of misunderstanding from '23 up until, what is this year, 20?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, and I'm glad you cleared that up. Thank you.
Are there any more comments from the Board? Just want to ask Mr. Murphy, here, I'm looking at your, your, your proposal here, so I see that your students was going to get a credit.
Yes, yes, Madam President, that, we had worked, worked that out with Mr. Tokars to make sure that everything fell within alignment with the IDOE for Indiana. And, and it did, because, so students also have an option if they're, like, if they're in ROTC, they can also, are able to get not only an elective credit, but they can get a PE credit as well. How our program aligns with that is through the marching band. So in order for our students to, to get that, obtain that, those, those two credits, they will have to be in summer band consecutively followed by the following year successfully in order for, at the end of the year, which includes their spring concert, in order for them to gain those. So that, that's how we, we did that. Unfortunately, we might, we probably won't be able to do it this year because.
Why, what, that's what I want to know, why, what happened?
Because we're not having summer band this year. So we're not, that's why we're not able to do that.
So, so, so I see here you had, you would have had 38 students.
Yes.
And then you would have had the breakfast program, or what have you not, for the students to eat and the warm-up, you know? So you have it all detailed here.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
And actually, that, that number, we are actually a little bit more. This, this year is the largest group of students that we've had. Let me pull it up here, because it was submitted to our, to our counselors over at Central. And let me get it here. So the, the number of students that we would have had would have been 48 this year, going into the fall.
And how much was this cost?
For the?
The whole, just your proposal here, who was the cost on this?
Oh, it was, there was no extra cost. It was just my, yeah, there was no extra, because I'm already a, an employee. So that would just, that would just be my summer, my summer program.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and then I see you would have had someone else here to help out as well?
Yes, and this, that would have been the, the individual, and he has applied and gone, gone through everything that he needed to go through, because we were trying to bring back the choral program as well as, he is a percussion, he was a percussion major. He attended Lincoln University of Missouri, HBCU, as well as Chicago State, also HBCU. And he's a graduate of Hillcrest High School, so he knows exactly what he's doing. He also plays keys, so he does organ, he does all of that, as well as vocal music in the surrounding church scene. So he knows what he's doing, and I am not, I am very adamant about not bringing individuals who are not at, at, at our standard around our students. So you, you don't let everybody come into your, into your kitchen and cook because you'll have mess. It's the same way with this. We cannot allow, we cannot allow just anybody to get in front of our students. Background checks can only take you so far, because they don't know what's going on here. And I think we've had, we, as, I look at these students as my, as my kids. I wouldn't allow anybody to get in front of my students, in front of my kids, so I'm not going to allow anybody to get in front of my students. And if you get someone to come in who does not know anything about our, our culture, who doesn't know anything about the community, who doesn't know anything about the students, that messes things up, and that creates a conflict of interest, because you will have two programs running at the same, especially when whoever is coming in does not have their own materials. These are, this is equipment that my students use, and if something gets messed up or torn up, who's, and this person has left, who's left with the broken instruments? Me, and I have to sign off on this and take my inventory every year. So that, we don't, we don't need, we don't, this, just, it leaves a bad taste in your mouth. And, you know, it, it brings, it brings up a, a word that begins with an N and does not end with an A, but with an M, nepotism. And we've had enough of that. So we don't, we don't need to, to, we don't need any more of this, because it hurts the students. It really hurts them, and they are hurt that they cannot have, and I spoke last. And they are hurt that they cannot have, and I spoke last week to three parents who said to me that they were under the impression that, oh, we thought you were running, Mr. Murphy. No, that has nothing to do with me. All of this stuff is encompassed in instrument music, in band. We have created a area, a atmosphere and a family wholesome area for our students to come to. I have a student, she, she had some issues at home and she was very adamant about when she would have her anxiety attacks. Her safe place in that building was the band room. And she has done a total flip. When she was dressing in all black to now she has different colors in her hair and everything because of what she's, and she's been with me for four years. So yes, this is not something that I just look on, on a movie and say, oh, I want to imitate that. I am that. Including my family. So, and, and I'm sorry, that was a long one. I'm very passionate about, about what I do, ladies and gentlemen, so.
Madam President, if I may?
Did you ask?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead, Trustee Rodriguez and Trustee Taylor. Go ahead, Trustee Taylor.
So, okay, just so I can get an understanding, are you in favor of the drum line or not?
No.
You're not in favor of the drum line?
No, ma'am.
And why is that?
We already have a drum line. And this individual, drum line is an entity within the overall band. Now, until, the first thing that students have to learn is what a whole note is and what a, what a half note is, the, the theory behind it. All that other stuff comes later on. So we have, there are levels to this, Trustee Taylor. And I, and I know you know because you are, this is a former band student.
Sure am. And yeah, so, yeah, and I'm conflicted. I'm conflicted because I am in favor of a drum line. I, I would like the drum line in our school district, but I understand the position that you're in as well. So I'm trying to, trying to find or trying to understand why can't we have both?
It's, it's not that we can't have both. It's one and the same. The issue is when you have, you can't have two heads on one body.
No, I get that. Yeah, totally get that.
And we, and we are taking steps to get there when I talk to Coach Gordon. So we are, we are definitely taking steps to get there with, with the proposal that I have submitted to you all. I know we can, we can get.
And I wish I would have got this sooner because I don't have time to digest it now and ask more, better informed questions.
Yes.
Now, with the proposal of Mr., of the individual here, and I guess I don't want to call out names, what was the intent for him then?
We were trying to bring back the revamp, the vocal program as well as he would be with our, work with our percussion students after school as well. So that way we can kind of hit two birds with one stone because there has not been vocal music in School CV Chicago since Mr. Kendrick's retired. And that was over a decade ago. So our students need that. And this is not something, we had a teacher that tried to do it after school and he said, and I quote, "This is not something that you can do after school. It needs to be a course."
Well, that, and that was going to be another question or comment that I had. Like, like I said, I'm, I'm fully in support of the drum line, but why can't we integrate it into our curriculum so that our students could get credit for that? Because I know several schools that do have both. They have a marching band, they have a drum line, and they have orchestra. You know, so I'm, I...
And I see what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
So in, in that case, I would suggest, again, with this individual, because he has his degree in music, in percussion studies, that could be offered as a class because you need a teacher to be able to teach, not someone, and I'm not knocking on anybody just because it's your hobby, that's great. But there are levels that you have to go if, and I, for example, if there, if there is an individual who is not a music education major, but they take a sacred music and they, yes, you have a music degree, but all the pedagogy classes you skipped over. So you don't understand how to get from point A to point B. You can't just say, take this, throw it on the pan, boom, you have, you have dinner. It's not like that. So it's the same, and with a lot of this stuff, you have to know a lot of things. And this individual knows the pedagogy. He knows the ins and the outs, how to get there and do it correctly. Because when these kids go out in the, in the real world and they're asking for scholarships, these director of bands ask and they want to know, do they know Flame Rata McKeel? Do they know this, that, and the other? And I cannot tell them, yeah, they know how to do it, and they can't hold the sticks correctly. I've seen this. But we, the, the Standard of Excellence, which is the book that we use in, in the district for teaching music education, the, it's there. All of that is, is written out. So that's, that's why.
Have we asked our students what they would like?
Uh, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
And what have they shared?
They talk to me and they ask about that. And for a lot of our students, our students need a, a person that will especially work directly with them. And so they, because they really don't understand the work ethic that goes in behind getting there. Yeah, everybody sees all these bands and they're dancing and they're jumping around, but you don't see, you, all you see is the top of the iceberg, not everything underneath.
A lot of people joined, a lot of kids had joined the band just because they wanted to wear a uniform. They didn't understand what it entails. I totally get that.
Absolutely.
And I agree with you. Now, one thing I am, you know, it's, it's the liability of the instruments. I know how expensive they are. I know the maintenance that it takes. So not understanding who's going to be responsible for that and the fact that we're using our instruments, so that, that does have me a little conflicted. But yeah, I, I would like to find a way to, to be able to have both.
This is the way, Trustee Taylor. And, and, and with that, I know Vice President, you know, you guys know that we purchased instruments in the past and they've walked out the door. Not on my watch. Every student that has an instrument has to sign a bond, an instrumental bond, that the parent and guardian has to sign and return it to us. So that way, that's a contractual agreement that ties us together and lets them know this instrument was given to my child or my student in this, in this form, and it will be returned back. If that child or that student messes it up or takes it away, then we have, we have them. They have to replace that for a, a brand new instrument.
Okay. And so, and I guess there's a question more for the administration here. So we're not having no summer band this year, so there's no presence of East Chicago band in none of our...
No, ma'am.
Parades or none of our events this, this summer?
It's, it's DEA D until, I'm sorry, August.
Okay.
There's, there's no summer band.
I would like to have some time to review this proposal and ask better informed questions.
It is. The students have already gone out of...
Trustee Rodriguez?
That was going to be my question. Madam President, with regards to summer program. Now, it seems like this, this particular contract is for, for this summer, correct? I know it states drum line, but we know drum line is percussion, so, but my question to you is, was this particular summer program offered to you first?
No.
Okay. And my second question is, you're saying that it's too late, but in your con, in your agreement, I guess it starts on the 28th of May, which is, was yesterday.
Yes. That was before we had gotten everything, the dates and things like that. So if we were going to have our summer band, the kids would have known. I let the kids know what's going on back in February. So once I, and I can't go off of when you submit, you know, three follow-up emails is, is just, is asinine, for lack of a better term. Because at this point, students are making plans, parents and guardians are making plans to travel outside of the state. And I cannot wait to the last minute to let 50-something kids know what we're going to do or what we're not going to do. Two weeks is not enough. We're talking, we need to know two and a half months. So when I submitted the hard copy at the end of February and was told to, to submit it electronically and then not hear anything until May, it's already been, it's, it's too late. I can't, I can't go off of that because of the plan. Now, it's, it's more than just me, it's a ripple effect. I can't make that decision because now we have to let transportation, we have to let the students know, the students have to let their parents and guardians know. All of these things have to occur. And when you do not let anyone know anything until literally the last 20 days of school, that's way too late.
So I guess I wanted to ask, why wasn't he asked first, but he stepped away?
Yeah, no way to...
So I guess my, my next question would be this. If, if we, if the board would approve a summer program today in board action, is, is that something you'd be able, and I know you're telling us it's going to take time to get students together, but if we approve it to say, we're approving it, we want to have something this summer for, for these parades in September, August, whatever, would this something, can, is this something you could work on?
It is not.
To make it happen.
Because at this point, I've made up the plans as well. So, you know, I, I can't, we can't, it's too late. The ship has already sailed. And unfortunately, this is, is just a hard lesson that we will have to learn when, because when you're playing with other people's lives and things like that, you miss out. And this is, this is the result, this is just a hard lesson learned by people playing, playing games. And this is just the result. Now, will the band be, yeah, every, every year, every band that you see every year, I'm pulling my kids in, getting them back together because they've been taken out and placed in other classes. So we will have a band this fall. It just might not be where, at the level that we left off at. Because now the students will not have played for almost three months.
And my last question is, so obviously, if, if the administration is wanting to bring this program this summer, I'm pretty sure they've contacted students and they've gone through at least the first hurdle of what you're stating. So let's just say we approve this and let's just say, you know, we feel that you should be the one, because I believe in internal communication first before we start looking external, is that something you can handle?
It's not that I can't handle it, Trustee Rodriguez, because I've, I've done it. But the, the issue is getting kids here after the fact, you see? Because school has, school has ended. And now, and I don't know what, what kids, it's, it's a long list of, of things because the kids have asked me and at that, when we're still in school, they say, well, are we going to do this yet? No, we're not having summer band. So now these kids have already made plans.
And these may be new kids.
The new kids, well...
So we don't know exactly, while you want to know who the kids are who opt into this program in the summer, but you'll have an opportunity if, if you want it, if we approve it for this summer.
And if, and with, with that, Trustee Rodriguez, if there, if there are new kids that want to get in band, 12, 16 days is not enough time to, to get in, especially when they have no experience. They don't know what difference between a chord note or eighth note or anything. It is, that's, that's a real, that's real tough. And I, and I don't, I don't want to lie to you all. I try to be as transparent as I, as I can because that's, I think that's, that's what we should do, especially for our kids. I'm going to be 100% with you. So that's, you know, I don't, and I don't want to tell you, yes, and then we don't have something because you just can't, the turnaround is not, is not that quick. And these kids don't have any previous playing experience. So you're starting from the ground up, literally.
And, and just to let you know, I was a trumpet player with Mr. Trimmell.
Okay.
And Mr. Lane, I was also jazz band.
Okay. I'm, I'm, we have a trumpet waiting on us.
But I, but I understand, me coming from West Side Junior High School over to Central, I didn't know anything, but I was marching in a Mexican parade in September. You know, and, and you see what I'm saying? I mean, there's things, even, I may, I may not have played that good, but at the time, but of, of course, I was in band since fifth grade up. But when, but doing the transfer, you know, we were dressed, we were marching together, we were doing this, we were doing things together because it's a summer program. My question is even, so I just wanted to see if, if it's in your time, if, if the board approves this, would it be something you can do? If not, and I understand, I understand your sincerity for the students, but I want to know, is it your time this summer or do you have plans to do something else? Or what can, because it seems like we, we, I, I would love to see a program regardless, you know? I think, I think summer programs for students, you know, in our school system, doing something rather than doing nothing is always, is always a plus. So that's why I'm asking you first because, yeah, it was presented to us differently, but I see your passion and your sincerity in terms of wanting to work with these students. However, and looking at your timeline, we're only a day off. And I know based on what they may have now, so they may have 35, 40 students.
Let me correct you with that. The number is four.
20 something?
The number is four.
Oh, four.
Four.
What Athletic Director said, he had 20 something students. To me, you have more than 10 students, I'm in. Let's do, let's do something. Let's make something happen. And I know if anybody's going to do it, it's going to be you. So I'm, I'm just asking you if that's something that you'd be willing to do?
If, if you guys are willing to stand behind me, then we'll, we'll see what happens. Because it's for the kids.
Yes.
It's not about me.
At the end of the day.
So it's for, it's for the kids. Yeah, I'll, I'll see what I can do. I see what I can do.
I just, I just want to say, nothing can be done overnight. I was in a band player, but I was a orchestra. I do play the violin and I wish you would get an orchestra because I was second chair in the state of Indiana. Thank you very much.
Yeah, working on that too.
I wasn't first chair because they, they, they spooked me down in Indian, in Lafayette. But I just want you to know, an orchestra, I know it's hard, but they taught me precision, they taught me how to sit like a lake. It's more to it than a drum line. Understand me. And it's more to it than being a cheerleader at a drum line. I mean, if you've ever been to a SBCU, whatever, you know goodness well, that's a lot of work.
Absolutely.
It's more work than, it looks like it's easy, but you've got to be on point.
Absolutely.
And when they come to that other school, say for instance, I went to Tennessee State and Tennessee walked on that floor with fam, you better be ready because they would blow you out the water. So I'm just saying, it's nothing to play with. And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not knocking anybody's program, but I'm just going to say this and people might not like me, which I don't really care, but I'm just going to say this, it takes time. And both of these programs are not in a timely manner to set up professionalism for children. Now, this all should have been done back in January.
Yes.
For the summer school. And that's the problem that we're having in this district. Stop bringing me this stuff two weeks before and I have to make a decision. Do you realize you're messing with children's lives? You're messing with their livelihoods in the summertime? Some of these kids don't have anything else to look forward to. Mind you, I have nothing against nobody's program, but stop bringing this stuff to us at the last minute. And that goes for administration, superintendent and all.
That's right.
If you can't give this to us four months in advance and you know school is coming, you're ready to come out and, and you want these programs to continue, stop giving it to me a week before because it makes a hard decision. And it makes us try to figure out where we're going to get the money from. If you give it to us in February, it's already in line. So now, my other question is, we know that you're a teacher, so I'm saying with everything else, where's this money coming from?
I don't know.
You, you have a curriculum. I'm, I'm not down to nobody else. Don't get me wrong. I'm not down to nobody else. I'm just speaking from my heart.
Yes, ma'am.
Where's this other money coming from? When that money could be, okay? So everything is all now today, today is March the, what, 29?
Yeah, the May.
May 29. Okay, now, everybody want to start when? Next week?
Yes.
Impossible.
Yep.
Totally impossible.
Absolutely.
People have made plans for their children, parents have made plans for themselves. So any of it is really totally, to me, is impossible. And, and for us not to own our own instruments and for us not to have set down, and first of all, I want you all to understand this, before, now I'm talking to the trustee, I'm talking to everybody. Before you go on making all these decisions about $5,000, $15,000, my first advice to you is talk to your financial advisor. my first advice to you is, talk to your financial advisor, talk to your CFO, because you don't know where this money is coming from. You're making plans, but you have no idea, is it coming from title, is it coming from operation, is it coming from education? We don't have general funds anymore.
Taxpayers.
So you need to talk, everybody, stop bringing us these programs at the last minute, and think if we're going to pass it, because you think there's money out there. Well, guess what? It's getting ready to be a lot of cuts. So if you don't have your stuff in time, and we have our budget made out for the next year, I, I have to hold my peace, because I'm from Gary, Indiana, and Mr. Monroe, you know where I'm getting ready to go, you are out of luck. Don't bring it to me, because I'm not going to take it. So I suggest all administrators, if you have programs, you have mentoring programs, you have all these things that you want to do for your children, for this district, and I'm all for it, do it in a timely manner. Now is the time to start setting up for '25, '26.
Yep.
Not '25, '25. Can't do it. Ain't going to do it. Not even going to vote on it.
Mm-hmm. Yep, absolutely.
So that's all I have to say about that.
Madam, madam president?
Yes, trustee Rodriguez.
I do have two questions.
Yes.
And I think trustee Smith did bring up one, in terms of where the funds are coming from. I think it was a $10,000 program?
Fifteen.
Or $15,000 for the summer. Dr. Burney, where, where's the funds? Where would that funds be coming from?
The amount has been reduced.
Reduced.
Dr. Yanders, come and speak to that.
Okay.
Well, when did it get reduced?
Yes?
Hey, everyone. This program was asked about last summer. The program that was offered last summer for band, it was under our ESSER funds. And that program started off initially, I think there were like 40 students signed up. When Mrs. Johnson put in the credit for that band program, there may have been seven students who ended up getting the credit last summer. This summer, we wanted to try something different, and do an introduction for the students, which can be done under Title IV, trustee Smith, that's where it comes from, Title IV. Under the other one, it has to be their ECA and/or title funds. So that's where that was coming from. So the money for this program was an introductory program, in which the program that was proposed was for current students. This was for students who, you want to expose them to it, give them the opportunity to play the drum. It's not for the current students to get credit, it's enrichment, it's to get them interested in it.
Okay, Ms. Yanders.
That's the difference. And the other difference is, the person that was recommended to do this wanted, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Simmons, was it like $50,000? It was $50,000, the person that was recommended, in the papers that you had.
That's what I know they did. Why they're paying on the 50 cent here? Okay, so-
And the $10,000 was for, remember, we talked about this last week?
Yeah, you did.
The summer program, but if it turns out to be a good program, we were going to extend it for an entire year. That's what that is for. Yes, ma'am.
Your contract that you have is already made out for a whole total year here?
Yes, ma'am.
Already made out for that? And I don't have, I don't know where you sent $10,000, I see $15,000.
It was, it was reduced.
I don't see that anywhere.
The contract, I thought it's, it was, it ended in August, and it, and it may be extended for the year.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, there you go.
Okay, okay.
And we worked that out with the attorneys, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me, school board, I do need to make-
No, no, not you.
I do need to interrupt the board proceedings to make an announcement. We were dealing with an issue that was occurring in the chat online, and we wanted to make sure that we addressed it. So we do have school CTV Chicago Police present, our own security is also on campus. We are addressing that as of this right now, everyone at the administration building is safe. The threat has been determined that it's not valid or credible, but if the issue is a concern regarding the safety of any students, we will allow students to leave at, at this time, in order to keep them safe.
So, I'm sorry. He, he's not, he's got to go to university?
Yes, you should.
You want to stay, then you want to go. Okay.
Thank you, board president.
Mr. Angelo, did you want to say something?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, board, good evening, E Chicago. My name is D'Angelo Coles. First and foremost, before I get into what I wanted to say, can we please give Mr. Murphy a round of applause for his tenacity, and his hard work, and his effort here in E Chicago? I am a long resident of E Chicago, I graduated from E Chicago Central, I was the drum major, class of '04, before I left, under the direction of Mr. Lane. You spoke about Westside, that's Mr. Nella Rally, when I was over at Westside. Hey, listen, when it comes to the band, orchestra, and percussions, if you do this, this is something serious. People have a passion for this, and this is why I want to be a part of this program. I am big entertainment. Once I graduated from E Chicago Central, I went off to college, and I worked for a nonprofit organization called Boom Squad. Their only goal was to teach drum line. There was no band, it was straight drums, snare and bass. This is what I do, this is where my passion lies at. So to agree with Mr. Murphy, yes, this is something serious, but for the summer, for our children that has nothing to do, this is something to keep them busy. Not only will I be doing this, I do things in E Chicago on a regular basis. I teach them how to tie ties, I teach them how to cook, I give away free haircuts, I do a lot of things based on the fact that our kids need things to do. And as the summer approaches us, they have to be active, because if they are idle, things can happen, and we don't want that to happen. We want our incoming freshmen to be prepared for high school. And when I came back home in 2015, my first question to my cousin, Tariqaboon, I said, hey, what's going on with the band? Where's the band? I have not seen the band. I came to the football games, where's the band? Because this is the field where I played at, this is the field where my blood, sweat, and tears were put at. I'm looking for the flag girls, where are the things that I remember when I was at Central? I have not seen it. This is no shot to anyone, but this is to say, we can come back, and we can continue a type of program like this, because our kids need things like this. I know my culture, right? As you can see, I am the culture. So with that being said, it's a sound that you hear, it's a sound that makes you move, you rock with it. And if you don't have that at our games, at the football fields, at the basketball games, it's not the same. If you bring it back, that brings more excitement to our community, it brings more people to want to come out. If they're not coming to see the basketball team, which we know they're coming to see the basketball team, they're coming to hear the band. They are coming to hear the music, and if our kids are able to produce that, what's the problem? I will say this, though. At the end of the day, Mr. Murphy, I heard everything you said, I would love to work with you, because you have the knowledge, you have the passion for it. I'm not sure what building you're at, whether you're at Block or at Central.
He had both.
There you go. I think two here's are better than one. And I understand, you are strong with this, but don't get to the point where you feel like you have to do this by yourself. You don't. We're, we're E Chicago, and E Chicago help each other. You said you graduated from Roosevelt, so that means you're from Gary. I'm from E Chicago, we're going to work with each other, and we're going to push each other and thrive for the whole city of E Chicago. I'm here to work with you, man. I'm not against you, I heard everything you said, I didn't take it personal. I just want to let you know, as brothers, we can work together, and we can make it work for our kids, because that's the goal. You said it was about the kids, it is about the kids, let's keep it that way. I hope, in the near future, that this program is approved, whether it is or not, I'm still going to do the work that I'm going to do anyway. So whether it's with the, the drums that you guys have on set, or buckets, music can be made from anywhere. Thank you.
President Gibson King, school board, I'm just going to say this, in response to several of the statements, we want to make sure that we want always what's best for our students, and our students absolutely cannot be performance-ready in 17 days, when we have not given them access to practice Monday through Friday. So we want them practicing every day of the week, just like any other sport or student at club, so they're ready for performance. And so, the expectation was, when I came in, I want our students participating in the parade, even if they just walk down the street with the instruments in hand, and I need someone who's going to deliver on that expectation.
Okay. Thank you. So, no, so, so, my question to you, Dr. Burney, were you aware of any of these emails or this program period from Dr. Murphy? Did you know anything about this?
Yes, I'm aware of it.
Oh, you, oh, you knew about it, okay, okay, okay.
Well, Dr. Burney, I understand what you're saying, I understand what Mr. Coles is saying, I'm understanding what you teach everyone and saying. My problem is the time span. It's just the time. Please don't wait till the last minute, it's the time. Everybody's now made plans, school, everybody wants to start their program. You mentioned this to me, how many months ago?
A week.
Yes.
A few months ago.
No, no, go back.
Some years ago?
Uh, yeah. Uh-uh, about a year ago. And what did I tell you to do?
Something mean.
Okay, but anyway, we're going to cut it off.
Can I say one more thing, though, trustees? I have been searching high and low for everyone, for all of the programs, drum line, I have a witness right here, Ms. Sylvia Alvarez, have we not been working on drum line, mariachi, as well as, you know I mess this up, ballet, folklorico? Hey, got it! Have we not?
Yes.
High and low, for months, haven't we? And we have not found anyone. So, Mr. D'Angelo, I just found out about him, and did not want to miss out on that opportunity, and his program actually was supposed to start on June 9th, trustee Smith. We already have a program with Top 20, they're starting on Monday, am I right, Ms. Williams? They have, they start on Monday with the dance part. We have been working, I've been looking everywhere for anybody to, to revive our arts. Me, I'm a product of E Chicago, but I'm getting ready to tell my age. I was in junior police, I was in junior police, I was in junior police, yes, I was in junior police.
Roosevelt.
I was in the band at Westside Junior High School, I was, um-
You was at the band at Westside, Gary, Westside, or E Chicago?
You went to Roosevelt.
Only one, E Chicago, no, I'm just playing, E Chicago, E Chicago Junior High School, I was, I was in the band there, I played band, I was in the band in fourth grade at Cary Gosh, with Ms. Quinn, junior high, Westside Junior High School. Then, at Roosevelt, I had to decide, so I chose dance, I was on fire, I was on the dance team fire. We, I'm like, D'Angelo, ain't nobody trying to work against Mr. Murphy, but our kids need what our kids need, and we need it now. And I have been working tirelessly, even Ms. Alvarez has been trying to help me, we need something for our students, and we can't put adults' feelings and emotions into it, only our kids' hearts.
Well, Miss Yanders, there's no feelings, it's just the timing. If, if this had just been done two months ago, it could have all been solidified. But the day, school is out, you know we can't find any kids now, half of them are going back to Chicago.
I have 32 who are interested.
That you say, okay?
That, that, that are interested.
Okay, so I'm just saying, okay, I'm, I'm not going to say, I'm not going to say anything else, I'm just saying, if you, if you all would talk to us, the board, we're human, we want to make the best for our children, I know I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I know some board members really don't really, they're just here for a seat, but okay, that's another story. But anyway, but I'm saying, my, I understand, Mr. D'Angelo, I understand, Mr. Murphy, and I understand what I want to do for our kids. I have a lot of plans for myself, I mean, for our kids, we all do. And if a board can work together, along with the schools, to, to revise these programs, then we can do it. Unfortunately, it's just a bad start, it's just a late start. So I don't know what we're going to do.
Madam, madam president?
Yes, trustee Rodriguez.
Uh, Dr. Yanders, and I appreciate your, your comments, because I agree with you, we are all one big family.
We are. And we just want most in the best interest of our kids. Our kids show interest in that, they did a survey, they picked what they wanted to do, we had drum line, we had dance, we had mariachi, we had ballet, folklorico, we had all of those things, and we have been searching since the beginning of this second semester for these things to take place.
Just, this is a comment, because again, I'm just a board member, but when we get stuff-
But your musicians-
When we get items brought to us, we have to vote on it.
Yes, sir.
It's important to understand that if we have the teachers that are willing to do the job, it's best to reach out to them first.
We reached out to a teacher, did we not? Mister, I don't want to say the name, did we not reach out to a teacher to do-
But I, I'm just talking about, I'm talking about every extracurricular program, because that's, it gives them the opportunity to work with the students that they've been working with for years, right? Also, and the same thing, I think, you know, who tells me all the time, this is, is our athletic director, you know, he reaches out to teachers first, before he, before he reaches out into the community, as far as finding coaches and so forth.
I understand.
And, and I think that's part of the rule, right, for IHS.
I understand. And for those of you all that don't know, Mister, um, D'Angelo, he is in a teaching program right now, as we speak. So he does know a little bit about pedagogy.
Yeah, I know Mr. Coles, he's a good guy.
Thank you, trustee Rodriguez.
All right, thank you.
All right, can we move on now?
Yes.
Yes, um, yes, um.
We're, we have a table there.
Is there a motion for approval? Can I get a motion for approval?
Madam, madam secretary?
Yes, trustee Rodriguez.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's all right, I, I know, I know, I know we all, I know we all, we all everything right now.
I think the, the last madam president?
Yes.
I used to call her madam secretary.
I know you did, and I'm not going to get upset.
But, I thank you for that. I make a motion to approve item 5.04.
Okay, can I get a second?
I second it.
Seconded by trustee, I mean, seconded by trustee Taylor. Can I get a vote?
Uh, madam secretary?
Madam secretary.
I'm sorry, madam, madam president?
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, I'm going to practice this, by the way.
Go ahead.
Madam president, so what, so what's the cost? Because I'm hearing 15, I'm hearing 10,000, so what?
No, I, no, it's, hold on a minute. We, we, public comments is closed, thank you. And so, and so what I have here, what I have here is 15,000 up to, okay? I don't have anything saying that, but, 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 Mr. Harris, but this is, this is some of the, this is some of the problems that I'm seeing here with this MOU. There's not a, there's not a, a, a name, an individual's name in this contract, there's not anything in here that says that how many children, you know, it's not clear as to what, this is just understanding, well, I need some more understanding, as to what needs to be put in here. Me, I do, I do, too. Okay, because this is, like we said, that, what Mr. Murphy gave us was already outlined in detail, what have you not, gave us the children, gave us the timeframe, and everything. And so, like Mrs. Smith has been saying, we just get these here at the last minute, it does not give us enough time to digest it, it would be ineffective, right now, because school is out for what, only four weeks? What are you going to do in four weeks? And like I said, that, I don't know, we just got this, I don't know how long they've been talking about this, or who, who all knew about it, what, who, who all knew about it, what have you not? So, you know, this, this needs to be, this contract, it needs to be more specific.
Yeah, I don't disagree, there's not a lot of detail there.
That's right, it's not, it is not.
That's what I know.
It's not, it's just nicking, because I'm concerned.
And, 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 madam, madam president, and no disrespect, there's no liability.
Yeah, no liability.
There's no liability, and if you're doing a corporation, Ms. Darden, you know that there hasn't been a liability. Because you do all these things. So, I'm just saying, you have to have insurance liability, because we cannot consume the cost, if anything, and I understand in your contract, you said you would be responsible, but what if something got hap, something happened, and it's $7,000?
If you had that, uh, that, uh, insurance of liability, that would cover that, that would not come out your pocket. I'm a, you learn from your mistakes when you're a business person. So always have your liability first. And then you're covered with that, because in your statement, you said, you will, you will consume all responsibilities if something was to happen. That could be very, very expensive. If a drum gets tow up, that could be $2,000. Then I gotta hear Mr. Murphy, how are we gonna get it fixed? I mean, because we're, those are really not our instruments, so we have to buy, we have, we rent those instruments. So if anything, that was my concern, anything happened to a drum or whatever, then we gotta pay for it. Then Mr. Murphy gotta come to us, then we gotta ask him why. So, and then you need, are you a 501(c)(3) or are you an LLC? That needs to be in your project. It's not in here.
It's not in here.
None, none of this is in here. And your cost, uh, and how many people be at your school? There's nothing wrong with your program, it's just that it's not incomplete, it's not complete.
And it's in this contract.
And it's, right, it's just the contract. So you need to have your 501(c)(3) papers, you need to have your, your liability. You need to, um, have it break, broke down where how many teachers or people, volunteers would be in your, in each school? Because you said they would be in all schools. So we have to have an account of that. Then we have to worry about transportation. Are we picking these children up? Because if we're picking these children up, then we have to pay our buses overtime, our bus drivers overtime. And they're not gonna, bus drivers and bus A's do not do anything for free. That's just the way they don't. Well, okay, stop. We know you might, but anyway.
The only thing I appreciate, I'm sorry.
But I'm just saying.
Go ahead, trustee.
Obviously, the only thing I appreciate about this contract, I mean, we just heard we have nothing going on for the kids in the summer. So this contract right here, the way I read it, it's June 1st through August 31st. Let's just give it a shot for the summer, so we give, give the kids something to do. I would, I would have loved nothing else than our own band teacher to, to take this on. So I'm gonna digest this proposal, I'm gonna read, I'm gonna digest, and I want to, you know, probably collaborate and meet or whatever we gotta do, because that is one of my goals, is to reinstate the band and the arts and the music back into our school district. But for right now, if we got people that are ready to stand up and do the work, let's let them do it, because it's for our kids. At the end of the day, it's for our kids, and this is a summer program that we do not have right now. So that's the only, you know, but yeah, at the same time, I am concerned, you know, the maintenance of the instruments, the liability, who's gonna be responsible for that? And, and all, so those things do have to be considered, but we got, we, we just gotta do what we gotta do. That's, that's all I wanna say.
Basically what you're saying, just, trustee Taylor, we gotta start somewhere.
That's what I'm saying, we just gotta start somewhere.
And I think, you know, and I tell you what, I mean, we talk about culture, right? I got 32 paint buckets. And I'm, I'm willing to, I'm willing to play with you. And the only reason why I say that, because I'm walking down the, right. I'm walking down the streets in Chicago. And I see these students, four students going, I mean, you're thinking they're, they're playing, I mean, you got the bass of the paint bucket, you got the snare of a paint bucket, and they're playing in unison. I've never seen that before in my life. I didn't give them a dollar, I gave them 10 bucks, because they were worth every penny.
Have a word from...
And I'm gonna, and I'm gonna prove this, because I think you're worth every penny this summer. But I would like some coordination with Mr. Murphy for the future.
Yeah.
Because it's important, because he is the educator.
Can I get a, okay, thank you, trustee Rodriguez.
Thank you.
One more word here from my attorney, Ms. Harris, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to add one comment, as far as what the MOU does have. Paragraph 11 does include an indemnification provision. So it does require, uh, the, the program sponsor to indemnify the school district from any damage. So that language is there. When I made the comment that there isn't a lot of information there, I meant regarding the programming itself. The MOU doesn't outline the programming. That wasn't provided for the MOU, so that's why you don't see it. But as far as the indemnification language, it is there, and I wanted to make sure you all knew that it, it was there in the agreement.
Okay, Madam Secretary, roll call, please. Trustee Gomez. Yes, trustee Gomez.
Can I have a word?
Yes, please.
Thank you, yeah, I, I agree with you. I think the, um, the contract itself is still full of holes, questions that I have, I believe, not looking at it right now, but, um, I believe one of it, while there's a cap, there's also, it's very fluid, and it asks, there's one person, and then it says, at some point in time, multiple people may be involved in this. We have no background, um, on this whatsoever, so I agree with you that the, the contract itself is, is flimsy. The, um, the same concern I have is the, the one that's been expressed by trustee Smith as well. You know, getting this as late as we do, there's a lot of questions about emails, and that bothers me. I raised a bunch of questions, um, last week about the, um, involvement of Mr. Murphy. Having been a former coach, and I hear Coach Gordon is there as well. I, I don't think anybody wants somebody else coming in and dipping in their program. Whenever, um, my nephew was running cross country, I may have thought, but I'm never gonna express it to him, because there's one coach, and I think this is the way this program should be run. Not because we just need to get something out there in front of these kids. I think we need to do something right responsibly, and this proposal is a failure in my eyes, that we're, we're not doing that for our kids. So I, I really, I, I don't feel comfortable with this at all. I would prefer, I don't know what Mr. Murphy's proposal is, but I prefer having one of our teachers from East Chicago do work with our kids however he can. And I believe I heard him say that he is available, so, um, I can't support this. That's all I have.
Yes, uh, can I get a vote? What's your, uh, roll call, please? Roll call.
Trustee Gomez.
No.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee, Madam President Gibson King.
I'm gonna abstain, I'm gonna abstain on that one. Madam President, can I make a statement? Is it too late now? Okay, even though I made my vote, okay, after the vote, oh, oh. Attorney can work with the staff to renegotiate in clarity of this. Maybe it can come back to the board. I mean, I mean, with some more specifics, so, because we have to break it down. Because first of all, we need to know how much we gotta pay. Even though we voted, I'm gonna put it like this, can we say we voted on the process?
No, let me shed some light on that. So Madam President, if I could, so it's approved as it is now. Um, there are some areas where we could add some additional language so that we can provide some clarity for the board. We can go back and work on amending the agreement. We can bring it back to the board for approval and ratification. But as it sits now, the program's approved, and the agreement's approved as it is. So we can work to see if there's any clarification we can provide, but otherwise, you've approved it.
Can I reject my vote? Can I take my vote back? Can I take my vote back?
Yeah, can she take a vote back?
Can I turn my vote back?
Trustee Smith.
Oh, my God.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Oh, no, we'll just...
Yes, okay, we're gonna move on. Yes. We're gonna go to, um... Oh, I forgot where we were at now. 5.05, okay. Okay, approval of contract renewal agreement for, for meal service. Pardon? Oh, Rising Stars, okay, let me see. Yeah, Rising Stars, I'm sorry. Approval of memorandum for understanding with Rising Stars. No, I thought, is that Dr. Yan or, um, is it, do we have any questions from the audience? Oh, it's her. Oh, okay.
So I can give a brief overview of the, um, the program. So essentially, this MOU is for our students to be able to participate with the Rising Stars program. The Rising Stars program, the goals are college coaching, mentoring, college and career exploration, college admissions, and registration support. So they are looking to have our students participate in activities that include university camps, employer tours and workshops, and provide college success coaches for our students that will continue through the first year of college for these students. So the four areas for career exploration are healthcare, manufacturing, criminal justice, first responders, and business. And this is at no cost to our school or our students.
Are there any questions from the audience? Direct that to CTA lady. Okay.
So Rising Stars is through Northwest Indiana, and they're through Latino Counts. Latinos Count? Yes. Yes. Yes, that's a program or a group that is, is in Northwest Indiana. No, this is open to all students. Yeah, so they're the fiscal agent that's providing funding for this program, but it is for any student that wants to participate. So essentially, the program is for college coaching, mentoring, college and career exploration, college admissions, and registration support for these students. So the students are recruited from our student population, so we at the school would recruit these students. So they would be like recruited from me as an administrator, our work-based learning coordinator, our guidance counselors. We would reach out and provide this opportunity to students and let them know about it. We've had a similar program in the past. If anyone remembers our students going to the St. Catherine's visits a couple of years back, pre-COVID. This is the same, um, program, or similar program.
If I can add, the Latino Count, they've been around for quite some time now. And they're, they are a nonprofit organization, they are sponsored by NIPSCO, several universities, as well as, I can't think of the corporation. But they do, I do attend a luncheon, but they have over seven dis, school districts at the Avalon Manor. And they, they, of course, they talk about their sponsors, but they also talk about grants and programs like this. So, you know, we've, we've been trying to get our students to participate with Latino Count for, for a couple of years, but obviously, they've been with us for a couple of years too, so. And I think one of our students received a, a grant, I don't know if this year or it was last year, I'm not sure, but I think we had one of our students receive a grant as well from Latino Count. And I believe... And the chairman is actually a school board member who's prodigy of East Chicago. His name is Steve Corona. And, um, of course, I lose Corona, I don't know if you know them, off of Euclid Avenue. Yeah, so he's been a board member for over 45 years in Fort Wayne School District. So, but he's actually incorporated this particular program, which started in Fort Wayne over to Northwest Indiana, and it's been successful ever since. We have. Well, I participated in their, in their luncheon last year and this, or last year and the year before last, because this year hasn't started, I think, November, where they start, you know, talking about the grants and how much of... And they've received well over a million dollars so far in grants that they dispersed to North, or Lake County, Northwest Indiana. I think trustee Gomez could speak more on this as well. But yeah, they've, we've, we're really excited about, and we, I think we had two busloads of our students attend the last luncheon, because the luncheon is strictly for the students. We just participate because we just participate, because they invite us to come, as far as board members. But, um, yeah, we have, and, and of course, our students, you know, we have a big flock of our students attending in one section. Then you have, you see Munster, Maryville, Gary, and all, and the various, uh, school districts in Lake County. It's for all, all students.
All students.
So this... We're seeking approval for the '25, '26 school year. So this has not started, we're seeking approval for this upcoming school year to have this program.
Yeah, you got 50. Right, but half and half, you got, excuse me, you have, you have 25 freshmen. And then you have, and then you have, uh, 25 sophomores, right? So now, so now, let me ask you. Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry. No, go ahead, I was just answering it. Now, do they go together, or are they gonna be split up?
So the activities are split up depending on the age group. So there's 25, slots available for 25 freshmen and sophomores, and then 25 juniors and seniors.
Okay, so who picks these children? Who picked the children?
So as, when, when we promote programs, we put it out to all students. So anyone is available to sign up if they want to. At times too, we also recruit using the guidance counselors, so they, if they have recommendations and social workers, if they have recommendations for programs, then they can recommend students.
We would like, the board would like to see that this program be implemented for all our students, and someone reaches out to let them know that this is available. Because I think a lot of times, we sit down here and we pass these programs, and we don't get no data. We get nothing back, and the children come back and tell us, you know, we asking, well, are you involved in this? Are you involved in that? Like you said, the program that we had one time at St. Catherine's Hospital, no more exists.
That was because of COVID.
But it never did come back, COVID left. So the thing is...
Well, this, this is starting it back up.
That's all right, but I'm just, that's what I'm saying. See, you don't get started back up with something else, and then here we go. That's what we're saying here, because we pass a lot of, we do a lot of passing the programs, and we never get anything back. But when we see our students, they're complaining because nothing has never took place, and it started and it fell off. So we'd like to have our counselors, Dr. Bonet, whoever, whoever needs to get this, get this moving here for all of our students. And then I have a parent here that wants to talk to you about this, about this, uh, student, when they get through. I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead, you want to say something? That's what we're trying to get understanding. Right. We've never had anybody oversee.
So we'll, we'll follow up with the board's specific questions regarding who at the school level is the point of contact.
Yes, appreciate that, thank you. Well, I'm just gonna let you all know that this, next year, either you're gonna do what you're gonna do, or you're gonna be out the door, simply that, our kids come first. Yes. Yes. No more child planning. Our kids come first, we're failing. We can't keep failing. And we're not gonna keep failing. So everybody will be responsible, and everybody will have to have a term to get reprimanded when they don't do what they're supposed to do, including the board.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve, um... Rising Star.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve...
Motion made by trustee Rodriguez.
5.05, I'm sorry.
Motion made by trustee Rodriguez. Second. Second by trustee Smith. Are there any, are there any comments from the board? Yes, Dr. Bonet got that wrote down. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith. Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King.
Yes. 5.06, approve of contracts, renew agreement for meal services. Are there any comments from the audience, please? Yes. Yes, 5.06, approve of contract renewal agreement for meal service. Are there any comments from the audience? Sure.
K-12 by Eleanor. K-12. That's the name of the company, K-12 by Eleanor, yeah. It was Sedexo, prior to them was Sedexo.
Ms. Simmons can briefly explain the contract?
So this is the fourth year of renewal with the state of Indiana. We have five years of renewal. K-12 by Elliott has been in the district for, going on the fourth year now.
And Madam President, if I can add to that.
Yes.
So this, it is a five-year agreement. There's a requirement that this come before the board on an annual basis for approval. If there were some major problems, this is the time that the board would be made aware of it and could take some action. But otherwise, it's more of a routine approval, not the five-year big approval.
Big approval, to get rid of.
Correct.
I will present the meal counts at the next board meeting in my section. I will present the year meal count, how many kids are actually eating.
Oh, you say you're going to give us the meal count?
I will give you all the meal counts in my section, the finance section for next board meeting.
Oh, okay. No, she's going to do that.
I personally have, I personally eat the food. Yeah, we have had them, they actually have catered for some of our events here at the administration building. So we have, we have not had any problems with it. Yes, I do understand that there is different things going on with the kids as far as the example, their concerns. So K-12 is actually going to do, take 30 kids at the end of summer school and sit down and have a sit-down with the kids. So we are, we are addressing any concerns that our students have. I'm sorry. No, that's not.
Are there any more questions? Any more questions from the audience?
Madam President.
Yes, Dr. Bonet.
We do want to remind our audience participants that the viewers at home online can't hear the questions, though. They have to go to the mic.
Oh, you have to go to the mic, oh. So we'll bring you the mic. No, not right now, but the next, on the next question, next question. We'll get the next, we'll get, okay, Ms. Lees, Ms. Simmons, okay, is there? Is, can I get a motion for 5.0, for 5.506?
06.
06. Motion made by Trustee Smith, second by Trustee Rodriguez. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez.
I'm sorry, Madam President, I do have a question.
Yes.
I just like to get some feedback from our student representative.
Oh, yes, okay, Edgar, yes, talk to us Edgar.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So the experience with the food?
Yes.
With everything? Okay, so the renewal of this does catch me off guard, because the one thing I did want to change was the quality of the food. Because with my years of being at Central High School, the school, the food never appealed to me. And nutritionally wise, for our athletes, it's not giving them the proper nutrition that they need, especially since they stay there from the start of school. And then they also stay there after school. So they need to have their proper nutrients in order for them to continuously work out and prepare their body for our sports. And that's always been like my, one of the big things whenever I talk to students is that they're not eating the food, or that they don't like the food, and they eat it because they have to, because they don't get home until later on. So my suggestions is, I mean, with what she said, is that it's correct with having 30, having 30 students talk and at the end of summer school and see what's going on with that. But overall, I say if this year doesn't go well, and whoever's after me does come and talk to you guys about the food and how students are continuously still trying to talk about it and how it's not helping the students in a good way, then what I would suggest is finding an alternative company to replace it. Because if, obviously, after four years of me being here, and five after I leave, if there's still complaints, then obviously, something's not being done correctly.
So can I comment on it? So our student body, actually for the athletes, they get a snack which includes all of the healthy nutritions for their athletics. But we have to go by the state of Indiana regulations on the food. And actually, I'm sorry, and federal. So I will produce the menus of the state and the federal and produce it to the students to understand that there are certain things we cannot add in food. We cannot add a lot of salt. Matter of fact, this year, federal dropped the salt count. Second thing, this year, federal dropped the sugar count of what we can actually offer to the students. I understand that we all go for the taste and the extra. But we also have to go by the federal and the state regulations to keep it funded. We are not, we're not self-funded in that area because we do not charge for our students' meals. So to bring the students in is one thing I did talk to K-12 by Elliott about. Also, I do believe the company prior to this, they also had student cooks in there also. So yeah, it's a lot different. And I understand the students because I'm picky about my food too. But we, with the regulations of the state and the federal, we have to abide by them. So yes, so I am bringing the students in to sample the food, tell them what they expect. So, and then next board meeting, I will have the numbers for the year of our, what the kids actually, numbers that they ate during the year.
Thank you very much. And my final comments, I would just say, I really do hope that with this surveying of you with the 30 students at the end of summer school, hopefully, they give good comments and something good that would help push like something better. Because I get the standards that there is. But hopefully, with whatever's coming this next school year, it's beneficial for the students and that they like it.
And if I can add, it's important to understand that we are 100% free and reduced lunch. That makes a big difference, because we have to abide by the federal government, state government, 100%. So the sodium intake levels that comes into our food has to be a certain amount. So with that said, if we were to do 60%, free, reduced, and 40% paid, we can accommodate the food a little better. But then we have to look at where we're going to get the money from. So it's important to understand that, you know, the free and reduced lunch is, the sodium intake with the free and reduced lunches is why the food is probably the way it is. Not nasty.
No, actually, it's really not a bad tasting.
I mean, there's, yeah. I mean, like I said, we can, and I know other school districts have done this, where they actually, they'll put 60% free and reduced and have that 40% on other meals that are a little bit more accommodating for students. And I think that's, that's all I have to say.
The district would have to pay.
The district would have to pay. We would have to pay, yes. Parents, I mean, I don't know how we would structure it, because we don't have a, we would have to put some sort of process in place on whether parents. We're not paying, yeah, we're not paying anything, no. Because we're 100% correct.
We're 100% free and reduced.
Yeah, we're this community.
Down there, Michelle. She did say, Ms. Diane.
Go ahead, Diane, I'm sorry.
Okay, I mean, here, yeah. No, I was just making a simple suggestion. My son went to Maryville, well, he graduated Maryville High School last year, which, like she said, everybody got free lunch. But just throwing an idea out that maybe it could work. I know every Friday, they always did Little Caesar's Domino's, it was like a, this is right by the school, they had a partnership with them. So the kids did eat lunch on Friday because it was always pizza. But then what they did was, we had to go online and set up an account. So like, I could put $20 on my son's account, and then he can go buy chips, which is outside of the school lunch. He could buy chips, pop, juice, whatever, you know, stuff like that. But then, you know, it's almost like, right now, when he hit me for DoorDash, he was like, hey, I need 20 more dollars because I ate like eight bags of chips this week. But at least he gets to eat something if they don't like the option. I was just trying to see if maybe that's something that we could do? Possible? Just the idea.
We're not allowed to because of the company. I've already tried looking into that alternative.
Check out other companies.
No, we're going to start cooking our own food.
Well, they can start bringing their own lunches, because if they do cuts, you're going to be bringing your own lunch. Won't be no free lunches. If they start, if they make cuts in free lunch, in free lunches, you're going to have to bring your child's lunch. I'm not saying it's going to happen, but I'm not going to say that it will.
Okay.
The next on the agenda is.
I don't think no one voted on it.
No, we didn't vote.
That's cool.
We didn't vote.
Yeah, because, yeah, uh huh. Because you still got a question, Trustee Gomez?
None.
Oh, for Edgar, oh, yeah, Edgar.
Edgar talked to the board. Okay, then, okay, yes, okay. Yeah, roll call, Madam Secretary. Thank you for treating me on track.
Trustee Gomez?
No.
What did he say?
Trustee Smith?
Does he know what he voted?
Trustee Smith? Yes. Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King?
Yes. Now, we're going to go to. What'd you say, secretary? 5.07, approve of non-certified employees agreement, 2024-25. Are there any comments from the audience? Okay, can I get a motion to approve 5.07?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve 5.07?
Approved by Rodriguez and second by Trustee Smith. Madam Secretary, are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please. Yes, just Trustee Gomez.
Yeah, can we have an overview of this?
Pardon?
Can we have an overview of this agenda item?
Yes, Trustee, Dr. Bonet? You want an overview of this, this year's certified employment agreement? Would that be Jewel? Oh, Ms. Simmons, oh, okay.
So this was, these are the contracts for the employees that was approved for their cost of living raise on the last board meeting. And these contracts need to be signed by the board so I can upload them in our system so the state board of accounts can see our contracts.
I can't recall, but I believe there was a, there were some conflicting documents on the, on the contract for the security personnel.
No, that, it was brought to my attention of the highlighted area for the security personnel. This is not part of that CBA that we're, that you're referring to. These contracts are for certified, non-certified administrators. It's just, this is not the CBA for the security.
I had sent the request to the superintendent on getting clarification on that other contract. I did not see it. I'll take advantage of asking for that one more time. Thank you.
Dr. Bonet, I will send you that clarification that he's referring to.
Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith? Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King?
Yes. 5.08, approve of certified staff cost of living increase. Are there any comments from the board? I mean, from the audience? Okay, can I get a motion for 5.08?
Madam President, make a motion to approve 5.08?
Motion made by Trustee Rodriguez, second by Trustee Smith. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King?
Yes. 5.09, approve of amendment of collecting bargaining agreement for transportation unit for January 1st, 2025, through December 31st, 2027, revision. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion to approve 5.09?
Madam President, I can make a motion for 5.09?
Second.
Motion made by Trustee Smith, second by Trustee Taylor. Are there any comments from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King?
Yes. 5.0, 5.10, approve of contract for labor attorney Skylar D. Geller. Are there any questions from the audience? Can I get a motion to approve 5.10?
Madam President, make a motion for approval for 5.10.
Approve made by Trustee Smith?
Second.
Second by Trustee Rodriguez. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King?
Yes. 5.11, approve of construction contract vendor. Are there any questions from the, from the audience? Can I get a motion? Oh, you got a question, Helen? Oh, can I get a motion to approve 5.11?
Motion to, Madam President, motion to approve 5.11.
Motion made by Trustee Smith?
Second.
Second by Trustee Rodriguez. Are there any comments from the, from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King?
Yes. Now, we'll, we'll have our, oh, nobody signed up? Oh, you did?
No.
Oh, we do? I don't have it on my agenda then. I don't have it. Just hold on a minute, please. Oh, well, see, I didn't have this.
Yeah, we have two more items on the agenda.
So we're going to go, we're going to go with 5.12, approve of first reading for policies for professional development and travel and draft policies, policy 3,000 timekeeping and accountability. Are there any questions from the? Are there any questions from the audience? So to prove or not to prove is, at, at this juncture, I cannot approve, you know, I mean, I, I'm just baffled. What is this about? It's the policy that we're gonna try to approve here. What kind of policy is it? If somebody tell me what the po- Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry. We'll get, uh, we'll get the, uh, uh, Trustee Gomez, this is policy, um... Is that you, Mr. Gomez? Mr. Harris can expound.
Well, I guess there's two things. Uh, Trustee Gomez can, can chime in as well because he chairs the policy committee. But just keep in mind, this is first reading just to get it into the process.
Yes.
There isn't any policy, though, being approved tonight. It's just first reading so we can get to the point of, uh, getting before you for approval at a, at a subsequent meeting. It may be the next meeting, it may be one after that, but...
So that means right now you're sending your blanket, no policy, no verbiage or anything in reference to the policy, just getting the process and there goes my...
Madam President?
Yes, Trustee Rodriguez.
Can you allow probably the attorney to just give a brief summary of, of the policy?
Yes, so one of the policies is regarding, um, timekeeping and staff accountability. And that deals with, uh, staff being responsible for keeping track of their time and their attendance. Um, it's intended to do exactly what the title says, and that's provide some accountability for the staff. Um, the final language of this policy may look quite a bit different once it comes before you on second reading. Um, but what it does is give the policy committee some instruction that, yes, the board has an interest in adopting a policy related to the subject matter. They'll go back in their next policy committee meeting and continue to work on the language and bring it before you in, on second reading. But that's the general topic of one of the policies. The other one is regarding professional development, and that deals with, um, the requirements associated with attending school board-related conferences, conventions and workshops, and the accountability associated with that. Um, and those are the two, two areas. Again, it's a draft at this point, um, and, but the final language will be reported out by the policy committee at the next meeting. And Trustee Gomez, if there's anything you'd like to add to that?
Um, no, nothing right now. I think you covered it pretty well. Uh, Trustee Taylor and I are on that committee, so, uh, we'll welcome input from the, um, from the remainder of the board, um, and then we'll probably meet, um, uh, sometime first week of June.
Thank you.
So we'll have it ready for our next meeting.
Get a motion for five point twelve, approval of first reading policies?
Sorry, I make a motion, Madam President, to approve five point one-two.
Motion made by Trustee Rodriguez, second by Trustee Smith. Are there any questions from the board? Madam Secretary, roll call, please. Yes, Trustee Smith?
Sorry, the, the questions for Attorney Harris. Um, uh, both of these items are listed the same in, in our agenda. Do we have to spell them out by, um, uh, by number?
You don't have to on first reading. It's, it's on one agenda item. Five point one-two has two sets of policies there. Uh, and with it being just first reading to get it into the process, I don't think you need to do it separately. I think it's okay as is.
Okay.
Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yes. Five, uh, thirteen, approval of second reading for policies, PO one seven five point one, professional development and travel and draft policy, uh, policy three thousand, timekeeping and accountability.
Madam President?
Yes.
Uh, I make a motion to suspend the rules allowing five point one-three to stand in second reading.
Okay. I need a sec.
Second.
Okay, so, motion made by Trustee Rodriguez to extend, to suspend? Okay.
Suspend the rules allowing this, allowing this motion to, to move forward in second reading on five point one-three.
Okay, and then it was second by Trustee Taylor. Okay.
Attorney Harris, you wanna, you wanna clarify?
Yes, so what's being requested right now in the motion is to move forward with the policies that have been discussed tonight on, uh, second reading so that they do become adopted. And that would mean that the timekeeping and staff accountability policy that requires a staff to, uh, be held accountable for their activities, um, with precise information, along with the other policy regarding the, um, the requirements in terms of attending conferences, training workshops, meetings, et cetera, for school board members, uh, would both be adopted tonight. If you approve the suspending of the rules and moving forward with the vote.
Yes. Madam Secretary?
Attorney Harris?
Yes.
Go ahead, Trustee, uh, Gomez.
Uh, Attorney Harris?
Yes.
The, um, I, I think I understand what, what's trying to be accomplished here, but we're looking at the second agenda item. I guess that's why I asked.
Were they gonna be together?
I, I'm not used to doing it this way. I would think that this would be passed on first reading and then asked for a suspension of the rules.
I think that's what he did. Yeah, it, that is where we are. So we, we did, it got passed by the board on first reading in, in item five point one-two. Now we're at five point one-three where it's up for consideration to suspend the rules and move forward with a vote on second reading if, if the vote is...
That I'm used to. Okay, fine, thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. Normally, it wouldn't be in two different agenda items. So I do understand what you're talking about, but because the agenda set out this way, that's the way it's progressing.
Okay.
Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Tay-
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yes. Yes. Yes, now we will go to our public-
Madam President?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve five point one-three?
Oh, I'm sorry.
In second reading?
Second reading, okay. Can I get a second to prove? Second by Trustee Gomez. Uh, Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Trustee Gomez?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Madam President, Gibson King?
Yes. Now we'll go into our public forum.
For the individuals who sign up, if they could, please step to the microphone, state your name and your address. Your comments will be limited to three minutes. Please be respectful of the board, the staff members that are present, and the audience, and please refrain from discussing any personnel matters. Thank you.
Okay, first person on the list is Carmen Robinson.
Good evening, my name is Carmen Robinson. I didn't come before you today to talk about food abandons. I came to talk to you about the safety and the lives of the children of East Chicago while they are in school. I had an unfortunate incident with my granddaughter, and I'm very disturbed by it. And I think the council, the administration in East Chicago should be aware of what happened because I would hate for it to happen to another child. The month of May was very unfortunate. My, as you all know, asthma can be a very serious condition. And in this situation, I know it wasn't taken, the, taking care of the right way. My granddaughter, I have dates and I have a paper change because I'm an old-fashioned, I have two generations of children that went to school in East Chicago, and never have I gone through something like this. And I would hate for it had been ended in another way, resulting in death. But it was just that serious. On May fifteenth, my granddaughter had an asthmatic at school. No one contacted me or my daughter, okay? And I contacted administration. They, I said, "Don't say nothing." They sent her home that day, a normal day walking home from school. On May eighteenth, we were home and had to, the paramedics had to come and get her, and she was diagnosed with pneumonia at St. Catherine's Hospital. The school was, uh, notified that she had, uh, pneumonia and that she wasn't able to come to school. And it was the week of graduation. She had a quiz that they said she was required to take or she would not graduate. So with that, they told me that if they brought, my daughter brought her to school, she would be on the first floor in the library and would be able to take this quiz, and she would pass the test. We sent her to school that day with the doctor's notice, and they had her go to the second floor for four hours, and she never took a quiz. They had to call the paramedics that, that day. Administrator, or administrator was contacted. We had them on the phone while the faculty there was very rude to my daughter. They even called the police on her because they wouldn't let her in to see about her daughter. Very disturbing, okay? They questioned her graduating because of this one quiz. In one week, on May nineteenth, we finally contacted administration again. It was after hours, the principal called with threats that Kaylin wouldn't graduate, and all of this, this is stressful. And even, we showed up, uh, she went to take the, like I said, the quiz. She was there at the school for four hours. The paramedics had to be called to the school because she went back into a asthma state. On May twentieth, uh, okay, that was the date the EMT was called. These are my notes. I want to know what the administration has following up on this. I have got a call, my daughter hasn't got a call. The baby did graduate, walked across the stage. But just the stress that we went through during this week of graduation, no one contacted us from the administration. There was no type of, nothing given from the school board or anything. They actually threatened my daughter to send her, they had the police there to take her to jail because she was irate. Now, who wouldn't be upset? Your daughter's in the school having an asthmatic, and you can't even get in to see her. This is unacceptable, all right? Luckily, we're not here, and Kaylin is here with me today, and she's not dead. But how many other children and other situations went on like this that were not dealt with? I mean, do you need to go back into your records and see what type of stuff is going on when these kids are sick at school? Are the parents or whomever the contact number is, are they notified? Like, what's really going on? I'm very upset with this, and not, somebody needs to do something because you're lucky that Channel Seven News, Five Seven, and Nine are not here because this is unacceptable. So motion that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Next on the list, um, is it...
Attorney Harris?
So the public comment section is a chance for the community to make comments to the board. It's not a question and answer session, but the superintendent made note of the fact that these comments were made, and I'm sure we'll be talking to you. I, I, I understand, the, the board doesn't know any of the facts related to this, so... The superintendent's not a member of the board, though, so...
Only person that helped was Mr. Howland, Miss Wright. That's the only, act like they care.
I, I understand. So, so I understand, what I would ask is that you stay after the meeting if you could, please.
Okay, just what you say. I, I didn't hear you.
Just if you could stay after the meeting so that we could talk.
Oh, okay.
As soon as the public comments are done.
Is it Dr. Michaela Sparberg? Almost.
Good evening. Um, I'm not sure if I'm the last public comment or not. Um, I will try to keep it brief, um, in light of what needs to be addressed, um, which is the first thing that I would like to comment on also. Like, there is a legal requirement for schools to inform parents of medical emergencies, bullying, um, certain other things that come up. Um, increasingly, for whatever reason, I see this across a lot of districts. Sometimes there's a disconnect between, like, the board, the administration, the schools, whatever, and it just doesn't get done, but it's completely intolerable. Um, and I hope that there's some kind of good resolution that, that the family is pleased with or satisfied with. It, it, you can't be pleased after something like that happened, obviously. Having said that, um, I also just kind of... Can, can I ask real quick, is there anybody after me on public comment?
Yes, you're not the last.
Yes, there's a whole list? Okay, okay.
Five more people after you.
Okay, cool, so, thank you, thank you so much. Sorry, I'm Dr. Michaela Spengenberg, Gary Education Coalition. Um, before all that happened, and sorry, like, I'm obviously very distracted by hearing about the horrible medical thing that happened, uh, to that child. Um, I did want to say, like, there are some aspects I saw earlier in the meeting that I hope maybe can be replicated for this. You know, I did, I go to a lot of school board meetings. I, this is my first school board meeting here. Um, and I've seen a lot of different models of, you know, inclusion of public. And I, I appreciated early on that there was an invitation, um, both of board response and of, uh, public, you know, response to things as well. And I do think that perhaps that was what was being looked for just now. And I, I don't think that it's necessarily an inappropriate request on behalf of the family given how distressing the issue is. Um, there were a couple of other things, you know, I also want to say, I'm really impressed by your students. I'm really impressed by your teachers, your faculty, uh, Mr. Murphy. Like, I'm so impressed by everything you presented. Um, you have a real understanding, not just of pedagogy and other things as well. But when you were talking about the JROTC and merging these things together, like, what brought, what brought to, what brought to mind for me was we're facing these new diploma requirements. We're facing a new base diploma that doesn't get our kids into schools, colleges, anything. And now it's basically like every kid is gonna need a diploma seal to do basically anything. Um, so I wanted to...
Sorry, your time is up, ma'am.
That's perfectly fine, at least I got to say something positive, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Charlene Mahone.
Yes, you can take your time.
Okay, I, I, I will, I will try to remain organized and focused, ma'am, thank you. Um, so, uh, in, because of what he put forward about the JROTC, some of that actually would help to fulfill some of your graduation, uh, requirements for some of those seals that then, I mean, not only is it serving the kids, but it's also helping overcome the financial burden that a lot of districts are facing with these new diploma seal requirement, all the add-ons. And I just thought that was so astute, and I really do hope. I also understand what the gentleman meant about you can't just throw it back on kids and parents and say, "Let's all just show up tomorrow and do band." Um, I especially question that regarding, when we were talking about Title IV funding. Um, Title IV funding is typically, if that's the primary funding source, I did note one thing that was a little bit unusual. You guys didn't seem to have a financial report anywhere I could find recently. A lot of districts will have that as part of, like, whatever's on board docs. And typically, you have a fund balance in that. And so when you have a fund balance, um, that tells you basically what's left, what hasn't been encumbered or spent in your Title IV funds. Because if you've already spent out all your Title IV funds because we're right at the end of that window, then the difficulty you have is that then you'd have to pull from something like extracurricular, which is another fund balance that you need to find on there. Um, so, and I, I did look back as quickly as I could while I was listening to everything tonight. It does look like typically your Title IV funding usually gets spent pretty quickly. So I, I would, and I'd also ask, where is that accounted for in the budget that was submitted earlier this year, too, since now we're saying, you know, whatever, however that goes? Um, the other piece of this that I think is really important to talk about is, uh, I mean, you, you have an amazing, uh, teacher federation president, too. Like, I was blown away. Uh, you advocate like, like nobody I've seen recently. You advocate like, like nobody I've seen recently. There's a lot of statute that governs things like this. And I really invite folks to look at 2028 in terms of Indiana Code 2018-2, because that actually defines for the entire Title 20 what is considered a teacher. So then when you're thinking about, okay, how do we handle the employment law aspect of this, that's relevant to that. Some of the aspects are specific to things like the emergency contract or the emergency, sorry, permits. That's specific to Indiana Administrative Code 515-1-19. But in that, you do absolutely like, I feel like, so that May 1 deadline is very specific to a lot of, okay. Well, I've given you enough and thank you so much. Thank you. I just have to say, like, every time I've come to East Chicago for anything, you guys are the most welcoming, beautiful community and I appreciate you guys so much.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, next, Mr. Murphy.
I don't know how I'm following that, but just wanted to say that this year has been a very challenging, difficult one for all of us. And to my fellow coworkers, I stand with you and look forward to working with you in the future. Take this summer to relax, reset and rest because we need and deserve it. Thank you so much.
Let me ask you something, Mr. Murphy.
Yes, ma'am.
So now you say that you're working at both schools, right?
Yes.
And you've been doing that for a while?
Yes.
So what is it that you need to help you at these schools?
Um, ooh, it's a whole laundry. Well, first, allow me to do my job and not micromanage.
Yeah.
That would be, that would be the number one. Next would be, again, some of the scheduling issues. It's, it's a whole, I have a whole list.
What I'm asking is, do we need to hire somebody at Block School?
No, um, well, as, as, yes, as, we need choir.
Okay.
We need choir. Because we don't have any other performing arts. You know, Ms. Goralecik is the only one that's doing swimming and we can't have, we don't have the swimming pool. So it's, we, we do need some other arts and we don't have, we don't have any.
So, so let me ask you, did you get your, what about your uniforms and your instruments? Are they being cleaned and, 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 uh?
Yes, we're looking, yes.
You got your vendor for those things?
Yes, same vendors.
So how often do you get that did? Every year or every two years?
Uh, every, once a year. Once a year.
Oh, once a year?
Yes, ma'am.
So, we don't have to approve this, do we, Ms. Duckburne? We don't have to approve him's uniforms and stuff getting cleaned, do we? Okay, I just want to make sure. Okay, okay, all right. Anybody question? Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Hellenstein back.
Pardon? I don't need to talk. I said everything I needed to say.
Oh, did they call your name?
I did. Ms. Fanny Bishop.
I am super excited. Juneteenth is coming up and I'm here to invite you on behalf of the East Chicago Public Library and the Friends of the Library to our Juneteenth event. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about Juneteenth and I'm going to get it, I'm going to sit down real fast. Juneteenth is celebrated to commemorate the official emancipation of enslaved people in Texas on June 19th, 1865, and the subsequent freedom for African-Americans across the United States. This date marks a turning point in American history, signifying the end of slavery in the South, though the struggle still continued, okay? So we're going to be at the library and it's going to be not this Saturday, but the following Saturday. Um, and let's see, the time is from 10:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. And there will be vendors there. There'll be this, this, this really, really dope, uh, live band that's going to be there. That's awesome, doing all the 70s and everybody that everybody likes, right? So looking forward to seeing you there June 7th. Thank you.
Ms. Debbie Williams.
Good evening. Unity and let's stay together and let's get together. And Mr. Murphy, we, we're going to support you, son. All right? I, I would like for everybody to give him another round of applause. Top 20. Top 20's been around 15 years now. And we are going to continue, we hope. We are planning, we're working really hard to be a part of the curriculum this coming fall. And administration is working with us. We're praying for that. We've got a fundraiser coming up on June 7th. I passed that out. We would love for you to support us. We need it, all right? We are going to be at Block on June 2nd with the students, okay? So that's going to be hip hop and majorette. Got any questions? Okay. But I really need you to support the June, June 7th Japote fundraiser. You know, money is short, money is short, they're cutting, cutting, cutting. We are, we have been 15 years and we do need the funds. Come June 19th through 20th, we are taking our students to New Jersey. Adults don't do that anymore. Travel across the country. We're getting in a van and we're going to take our students. They've been invited. They're going to perform three or four times. So they're performing on the 6th in Michigan City, at the Lebesnik Center. They're performing at the Juneteenth Celebration at the library and they're performing for the Kappa, KSI, at their event at the Savah Hall. So we need all the support you can give us. Thank you.
That concludes our public comments.
Yes. Now, we have trustees' remarks. Just, uh, yes, trustee, go ahead. Go home. How about something from our superintendent, Dr. Burnet?
We want to recognize the full engagement of our student board member this year, having served really well in his role, representing the voice of school, city, Chicago Cardinals at the high school, very actively engaged. And to that, we want to say thank you. East Chicago Central High School Class of 2025 Distinguished Graduate Award presented to Edgar Torado Student Trustee from the School City of East Chicago Board of Trustees,
Somebody get off, please. Come on, Diane. Come on, Jewel, get this picture, Jewel. Yes, come on. Uh-huh, yes. You've been a jewel. Yes. Thank you.
And we will be announcing the next board student in upcoming board meetings.
Okay, now we, now we have our trustee remarks. Trustee Rodriguez.
You know, when I first, this year, I thought I would be the only suit and tie individual, dressing sharp, come into meetings. When I saw Edgar, I'm like, he got me beat. I'll tell you that much. He got me beat tenfold. Um, yeah, again, I just want, I'm just going to have, I just have a quick comment. Just, I'd just like to thank the graduates for EC Central Cardinals for 2026, for overcoming their obstacles and graduating. They will be graduating June 6th. And I just want to say I'm really excited, wishing, was it June 7th or June 6th? June 7th. And, um, you know, I, I want to give congrats to them and wish them a safe journey on their next journey and their student achievement, academic achievement. So I'm very proud of that and looking forward to seeing all of them on commencement day. Thank you.
Trustee Taylor.
Good evening, everyone. Make this very short and sweet because I know it's late. As we close out the school year, I just want to thank our students, our families and our educators and, of course, our staff for your dedication and your resilience to carry, carry us out this year. I've been sitting in my seat now as a trustee for nearly five months and while I'm still learning, I carry the same excitement, the same motivation and the same commitment that I started with. I'm committed to continue to learn every aspect, do all the research that I could do so that I can make informed decisions that align with my core values, which are integrity, respect, self-service, public service and, of course, love. So it's an honor to serve this community and I'm looking forward to what we've, we will accomplish together and wishing everyone a safe, joyful and restful summer. Thank you.
First, I'd like to graduate, congratulate all of our graduates from middle school to, from elementary school to middle school to high school. Job very well done. It's been, it's been a rough year. Thank you for carrying us through. Teachers, thank you for sticking with us, even though I know it's been rough. Those board members, those parents that come out to support us, we really, really need your support. I'm going to say this, and I'm trying to say this in a nice way. I was elected to serve my district and I do it heart-heartedly. And I think all of us do the same thing because we don't have to take the time out during the day to sit back and read all of this stuff and then come here and present it to you. I do have a problem with, I'm not going to call anybody's name, but I want you to know that we are a board of integrity, respect, morals and values. You all elected us to sit in this position. And for someone to use whatever excuse they have to use to be absent or to walk out is unacceptable. And the only person that can change that is you. You're the voters. You can make it happen. There should not be any reason. We have, we have come through here, we have come to board members when we have death in our family, our parents have been laid in the hospital, they don't know if they're going to make it the next minute, our president, myself, we all have health issues or whatever. But we make it. We make it. So whatever you afraid of, you need to be a man or a woman and stand up to it. It's as simple as that. I know a lot, I know I say things off the cuff of my head and people say, Diane, why really? Because that's just me. But I can back up what I say. I can back up what I say. And what I say, I mean what I say. And I'm not running from anybody, but it's a shame that we have some people on this particular board who does not respect this position. If you don't respect this position, then you need to go. You need to be put off because it's not about you, it's about our district. And as a matter of fact, I feel that you're holding me back, holding us back. So I'm just going to say this. They was told, they told me this be nice, but y'all know I'm from Gary. Huh, I'm always nice, but no, no, I just have to let you know, Mr. Murphy, all of you all, counselors, you all did an excellent job by trying to get our kids back and forth to Atlanta, the band, the athletic department, the alumni, the teachers' union and all, and the teachers. All of you all have done an excellent job considering all of the mayhem we went through this year, which was caused by one person. But because God is in the midst of it and we know we're coming out, we don't have nothing to worry about. You can come after me in 2026 and see, I'll still be here in 2027, 28, 29, until God tell me my mission is done. But because of the respect that I have for my babies, and I call them my babies, I'm going to be here. She's going to be here. Mercedes is going to be here. Joelle's going to be here because we're here to help our district. And we're moving. We're not moving as fast as we want to, but we're moving. And I'm so proud of this board that we're sticking together. So I'm speaking for them, whether they say it or not. And I hope he's listening.
I second that.
No more.
Thank you all. You know, we are a fun board, as you can see, you know, because, you know, there was a time I was sitting there with you all and faces round and what have you not, you know, but we like to have, we like to have a little fun, you know, to keep, I know it's long, but it's well worth it. And I love my board because, you know, we, we are finally getting there. We're going to get there because we, it's about our children. It's not about us. We sit down, we take our time now to go through things instead of just looking for a three votes, as they would call it, you know? That's not any good. And so we've had a good, I want to say, we've had a good year. We've done a lot of things, starting from January, we took, we went to Atlanta with the students. We've had a good game. We've had our kids that, with the eighth grade graduation luncheon, which was something. And then we have now coming up our, our senior graduation, which is June the 7th. So there are a lot of things that we've done. And now people are coming out, you know, which I like to come out and they're getting engaged, coming out, asking the right questions, want to be a part of, you know, because this is about our children. So with that being said, I'm not going to hold you too long because they, I'm the last one to speak, so they say it all. You know, it's not really too much for me to say. But I do want to just read off something here. I hereby certify that any ex, that an executive session was held on April the 17th, May the 1st, May the 14th, May the 15th, 2025, and nothing was discussed during that meeting other than the information included in the post and advertised notice. This is under the Indiana Code 5-14-1.5-6.1. Dr. Burnet, do you have anything before we adjourn?
No, we're just looking forward to our last graduation for the 2025 school year, our Class of 2025, on Saturday, June 7th at 2:00 p.m. at Central High School.
And our next meeting will be June the 10th here at the Administration Building. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Madam President.
Yes, trustee Rodriguez.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, yes. Motion made by trustee Rodriguez.
Second.
Second by trustee Taylor. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Oh, and thank you, Edgar. I forgot. Yes, Edgar, go ahead and talk. Yes. But see, we're back out here, we just all like, just. But no, he got on track with Jesse, when he asked him.
Or it was me?
No. But go ahead, Edgar.
Okay. So I would just like to say thank you for this board, for giving me the opportunity to sit here. My senior year went by fast and I went through some trips at the School Board Help Fund and I do thank them for that very much. Being here, being able to speak for the students has always been a great thing and I do believe I've made an impact this year and I'm very glad for that. And I hope whoever comes after me also tries their hardest, just like I did, to help make change happen to the school district for the better of the students.
Okay, now that concludes our meeting. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, roll call, I'm sorry. Yes, roll call, Madam Secretary.
Okay. Okay, he go. Trustee Smith.
Call it.
You have to call it.
Yeah, you got to call the name. Trustee Gomez. Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Rodriguez.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Madam President Gibson King.
Yes, and this concludes...